Yeah, I'm ready. Madam President, you need to unmute.
Okay, there we go. Are we all set?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Reynoldsburg City Council Meeting, January 25th, and the time is now 6:38. I am Council President Angie Jenkins. This meeting is being held virtually and livestreamed on the City of Reynoldsburg Government Facebook page. Molly, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Salvati?
Here.
Councilmember Pecorrel?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Cotner?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Bryant?
Here.
Councilmember Strickland?
Present.
And President Jenkins?
Here. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. And would everyone please stand while Molly shares the virtual flag? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
-of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible-
Indivisible-
-with liberty-
Liberty and justice-
Justice for all. Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes this evening to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands approved as submitted. Next, we will have the approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of January the 11th, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to these minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council, bring matters to the attention of the city council. Comments related to tonight's public hearing may be made only during that public hearing. The council president will invite speakers to be recognized, give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to exceed three minutes. Do we have any comments from the community?
We do have one individual in council chambers tonight, but his comment will come under the first motion regarding human trafficking. We do have several email comments that came in today that I will read, Madam President. The first is from Robert Barga. "Good evening. My name is Robert Barga. I'm a resident at 1589 Stouter Drive, and the following is made in my personal capacity. In relation to the work session on E1 and ordinance to amend Chapter 503, I have the following questions to the presenters and council as a whole. I represent a fair number of landlords, many of whom have a desire to keep a current tenant in their current unit. These landlords don't care where the rent comes from. They only care that it is current, or if delayed, that the tenant has talked with them and worked out details. The landlord can then pay the mortgage holder. If it is delayed too long or the details aren't worked out, there's usually an eviction action. A vast majority of evictions I handle end with a settlement where the tenant is kept in the unit with a payment plan and the assurance of continuing rent being met. This is easily possible if the tenant is able to work with an aid group to secure their rent going forward, and if they aren't, a deal usually can't be met. Based on my current reading of this proposal, which has the right spirit and concerns in mind, I would struggle to advise my clients to take such a deal and instead would have us to seriously consider the suggestion that evicting every single person with the slightest breach in the smart route is the smart route to avoid any allegations of violating this proposed law. Under this proposed law, would such a deal be legal? If you believe that the deal would be legal, what is the portion of the proposed law that would allow for this distinction to occur? If you believe the deal would be illegal, would this result in more evictions on the record as a really bad time for those this is designed to protect?" The second email is from Sarah, and I am sure I will mess up her name, Holes Cotter. She's a member of B R E A D organization. "Dear Council, the housing crisis in our community has worsened. Source-of-income legislation is an important tool in helping families with vouchers finally access safe, decent, affordable housing. In addition, if you all choose to make source income, legislation applied to back payments, deposits, and emergency assistance, as well as ongoing rent, it could drastically improve the ability of residents to maintain their housing when trouble strikes. Every day, I work with individuals who are at risk of eviction. Some who have paid on time until then, expected to pay on time afterwards, have been forced to move out simply because their landlord refused to take a third-party payment after a one-time event that left the family scrambling for that month's rent. Others who have guaranteed rent payments through vouchers are denied applications because their income is not high enough or because the landlord doesn't accept vouchers. Still, others have been accepted at first, but denied when they revealed that the deposit would be paid for by a church, shelter, or social service organization. The fact is that many tenants who will otherwise make timely payments throughout their tenancy are often prevented from renting because of discrimination based on the source of income. Refusing to accept a voucher, refusing to accept a one-time third-party payment during times of economic distress, and refusing to consider applicants who don't meet stringent income requirements are discriminatory practices that exacerbate our racial and economic disparities. Restaurants and retail businesses long ago became more flexible in accepting payment via cash, as well as cards, and now often through third-party delivery apps. Does this flexibility require a little more work for businesses? Yes, but it also expands their accessibility to customers and strengthens their ability to keep the revenue flowing despite drastic changes in how people shop. In a market where over 40% of tenants are paying 30% or more of their income on housing, being flexible to accept income from any source will benefit landlords' sustainability in addition to reducing the racial and economic disparities that plague our city. Please support this legislation so that hundreds of families in our community may benefit." The next comment is from Carolyn Thurman. "I am writing to show my support for the City of Reynoldsburg, joining with the City of Bexley and the City of Westerville in enacting legislation to protect tenants regardless of their method of payment. In my experience working with rental assistance programs, I have found that the biggest barrier that a household must overcome to find suitable housing is discrimination. I believe that anyone who receives outside assistance for paying rent should have fair and equal access to rental housing throughout the region. Many people would like to rent homes in higher-resourced communities, including Reynoldsburg, as they grew up there, would like to stay after their life circumstances have changed. Some are not able to do so as landlords are not required to accept their payment, whether it is Social Security, alimony, or child support, veterans' benefits, a housing choice voucher, or other support. Women, children, and people of color are disproportionately impacted when landlords are able to choose what type of funds they consider acceptable for payment of rent. Even though having a voucher, which provides a guaranteed rent payment is- of rent, even though a voucher, I'm sorry, which provides a guaranteed rent payment, is recession-proof and increases if the voucher holder suffers job loss, some landlords are unwilling to accept this form of payment. People will benefit if SOI protections are adopted. A comprehensive study by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development showed that in cities with SOI protection landlords were less likely to deny housing vouchers than in cities without SOI protection. In cities without SOI protection, vouchers denial rates were exorbitant, topping 78%, but cities with these protections saw denials plummet, reaching as low as 15%. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope to see this legislation moved forward during tonight's meeting." The next comment is from Alex First, a Granville resident. "I am writing today regarding the ordinance to establish Rental Property Registration Program, scheduled as a work session during the Public Service Transportation Committee meeting this evening. This ordinance request was, as written, calls for Rental Property Registration Program to be managed by the Development Department. The Development Department has a very small staff, and this ordinance provides no additional budget for the management of the rental property database. I understand that the registration fees required under the proposal are intended to pay for the administrative costs of administering the program, but I doubt that Mr. Bowser's team can administer this new program without detriment to their main departmental functions. Furthermore, this program is outside the scope of expertise in the Development Department. Either of these scenarios are an efficient use of taxpayer funds. For these reasons, this new program is much better suited for the Building Department, who has the necessary expertise and staff resources. Since this program is quite similar to the vacant property registration program recently enacted by the city, which is already administered by the Building Department, their team seems like a natural fit. Please change the proposed ordinance so that this new program is managed by the Building Department. Thank you for your consideration, and please contact me with any questions or concerns." The final comments are all on the same subject regarding the adult entertainment legislation. This is from Daniel Gangloff. "We have on the agenda proposition regarding sexual trafficking, and in the same breath, a proposal to add a sexually-oriented store. Studies have shown that when this type of business enters a community, the crime also increases. Is this really the direction our city wants to go? This is not the kind of business that should be brought to our great city, especially since our crime is already on the rise. We need to consider the increased crime as a factor when we add new businesses. Do we really also expect higher-end businesses to join our community if this type of business enters it? I am not in agreement that this is the kind of business we need. I am opposed to this kind of business for safety reasons and crime reasons. I am a mother, a resident of this city since 2012, and moved from a home where this type of business was located due to the crime it brought with it. As a mother, I cannot imagine feeling this is a safe business to bring into our city." The next comment comes from Angie McCombs. "I have been a Reynoldsburg resident for over 40 years, and I am writing to admittedly oppose allowing a lion's den to be established in Reynoldsburg. If you are serious about addressing the horrors of sex trafficking in our community, then allowing lions den shows blatant hypocrisy. It's shameful. Do the right thing." The next one comes from Krista Callahan. "Sending a message loud and clear: No Lions Den on Route 256, period. As the citizen of Reynoldsburg, I strongly urge the city council to vote no to any adult businesses in Reynoldsburg or on Route 256. We already have a gang issue in Reynoldsburg on Livingston and Bryce. I thought we were trying to bring Reynoldsburg into a respectful town. This would lower the standards of our community even more." The next comment comes from Karen McPherson. "Good afternoon. I just heard through social media that at some point council will consider allowing a lion's den on 256. If this is true, please add my name to vote no on this issue." And the last comment comes from Linda Wooten. "As a longtime resident of the City of Reynoldsburg, I would strongly urge the city council to vote no to any adult businesses in Reynoldsburg area or on Route 256. I am fully and wholeheartedly opposed to a business operating as a restricted or adult zone location within the city limits of Reynoldsburg. Thank you for voting no on behalf of the protection and consideration of the residents of Reynoldsburg." With that, Madam President, I understand that City Attorney Shook has something that he would like, a comment that he would like to make.
Thank you. Attorney Shook?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to address some of the comments that were raised about the proposed changes to Chapter 795 for adult-oriented businesses. As an initial matter, I would note that Chapter 795 has been in place since 1999. The changes that we are proposing tonight only increase the distance that any of these businesses would need to be located from sensitive uses in the city, which include a public building, public park, religious institution, residential district or use, or a school. So, the changes to this particular ordinance tonight are only to increase how far away such a business would need to be from those very sensitive uses. It is not to bring in any proposed use. As far as I know, we have no permit for any adult-oriented business in the city, and we have no permit pending. This is just us being proactive.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Begany, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I just wanted to add that social media can be a wonderful thing for getting information out, but at the same time, when information that is incorrect or inaccurate is promoted as fact, it can cause a lot of issues. I would like to mention to anyone in, obviously with city council, you know this, but the community members that are watching, if you do hear something or see something, feel free and give us a call here at City Hall. You can contact Clerk of Council Molly Prasher. She did speak to a number of people earlier today and kind of explained what the City Attorney Shook said. You can call my office, you can send an email, anything of that nature, and we'll be more than happy to answer the question so you can get the information factually for that. It's not always easy, and I know sometimes, you know, you see something on social media and you're ready to go right at it, to have those conversations, but I would just encourage you to reach out to get all the accurate facts first. I will plug the Reynoldsburg connects. You can go ahead and log on to that so you can get some up-to-date information as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council?
Yes, Madam President, may I offer a comment?
Yes.
I'd like to just highlight the five blessing boxes that Reynoldsburg has throughout the community, and it's a way that neighbors are proactively helping neighbors. And if you're not familiar, please visit the Reynoldsburg Blessing Box on Facebook. The five locations are TT's Playhouse on Livingston, that's in the plaza behind the Arena Diner, the Messiah Lutheran Church, which is on Wagner Road, City Hall, which is Main Street, the Kinder Care on Bartlett, which is Rose Hill and Bartlett, and the City Church on Taylor Road. And they do have the ground rules as no perishable items and making sure that you keep the blessing boxes neat and no food on the ground. And the Facebook page also has ground rules, and the administrators really keep it clean and tight, and I've even had Facebook posts declined. So, they do run a tight ship, and it's all about feeding our neighbors, and we want to make sure that we get this information out because it's right in our own backyards. Thank you.
Madam President, I neglected, we have two people on Zoom that also would like to make comments. So, we have Keith Benner. So, Mr. Benner, if you can unmute, you can make your comment, and that will be followed up by the Reynoldsburg Football Parents.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Thanks, Council President Jenkins. I want to talk about the Source-of-Income Law. My apologies to those who have written in and espoused their support for that law. I cannot support it. I am hoping that this is a work session that will end in a spirited debate among council members, council people, council persons will explain their- the reasoning for this legislation, how it came to be, who it benefits, you know, was this done from research that someone done? Is it constituents flooding your email inbox? Or did, exactly where did it come from, and who does it benefit? I mean, the constituents, the citizens of Reynoldsburg, people that you represent already live here, so unless they're looking to move within the city, this isn't a real big issue for them. It's the voucher law, and that's what it is. There's no landlord anywhere, corporate or a small guy like me that will not accept VA payments, Social Security payments, alimony, child support ordered through a court. That would be silly. But none of those sources of income require you to deal with a bloated, inefficient public housing authority. That can take time to get you your money that will require you to jump through smaller hoops in order to get it done. When the voucher law was passed by Congress, it was made voluntary, and it was made voluntary for a reason. We are a free-market kind of a place. Enforcement of this is also an issue for me. I mean, it's not a protected class right now. As soon as word gets out, I would expect that anybody that does have a voucher in their hand that is denied rental or isn't one chosen, if there were several more applicants. I hope the city attorney's office is prepared to handle the volume of claims and complaints that will be, that will be coming his way. Basically, I would just like council to go on record tonight during their work session. I would like everyone's opinion of this. I would like to know how, if they like it the way it's written, if they feel that it's really necessary. Does it really serve the people of Reynoldsburg, the ones that you represent? And if so, God bless you all. But my opinion, it is not necessary. I should not have to deal with the housing authority. And I'll leave you with, if you all had a car to sell and three people came, one had a cashier's check, one had cash in his hand, and the other said, hey, the government's going to buy this car, but they're going to have to come out and inspect it next week, and then if the car meets their requirements, I'm going to be able to buy it off of you. Who are you going to deal with? It doesn't make sense to me. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, is it Kelly? Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kelly Jackson-Webborn. I am the current president over the Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association. We were coming to you guys asking, just to give you awareness as to how the football program is going, and also to ask for assistance. Our football program does cover the junior high program as well as the high school program, and definitely due to COVID, we have not been able to raise funds in the normal avenues that we have. So, we are in dire need of being able to feed the players, and it's also my understanding that the football program has not been able to purchase new equipment, which you definitely could help our program, help the players. In addition to just sports in general, definitely help keep the kids out the streets, and so we're definitely looking to keep the kids engaged and truly motivated to stay a part of football program. So, I'm definitely here today asking you guys if you guys would be willing and open to giving us money to help us continue this program more. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening. I know, and I'm sure that Shawnet knows, and Councilwoman Meredith Lawson Rowe, we totally understand, and I'm sure there's some other here in the meeting that understand how it, how much it takes to run a football program and how much time and volunteer hours, and we totally understand and get it. So, totally understand where you're coming from, and then right now with COVID, I'm sure things have been even more difficult to get the meals-
to get the meals that you normally get as far as volunteers and restaurants and things like that. So I totally understand the need. So, but thank you for coming this evening.
Madam President, may I say a couple of words?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for coming. I really appreciate you coming in front of City Council and speaking to everyone regarding how important the Reynoldsburg Football Parent Association, these group of people volunteer their time. I was in your shoes, being on the board and knowing how important it is. It's not, the funds just not go to our football players. It goes to making sure, again, their equipment being protected, making sure they have the food that they need. And also, some of that money goes towards the coaches to making sure that they are in compliance when it comes to the training that they need or any extra classes that they need to attend. This year has been very difficult for RFPA, for our football players. And so I am going to ask the council, my council peers to, you know, donate some money. I will donate, Ms. Kelly, to the organization to making sure that our football team has what they need to making sure that they are, number one, being protected and also getting fed because we have some big boys that's on that football team. And again, they are always representing Reynoldsburg when they go out there and put their heart out there on the line. So again, I plead with my council members to make sure that they donate to the RFPA. I believe to write a check, and also can they still do PayPal? Or how else can we do a send-in funds?
Oh, sorry. We actually have a link on our website. Our website is reynoldsburgfootball.com. You can go to our donations page, and we're also able to accept funds via the PayPal link on our website. Our P.O. box, if you would like to send in a check, is P.O. Box 60, Reynoldsburg, Ohio 43068. So thank you, guys. I definitely appreciate your donations and your help with this this season.
Kelly, I haven't forgotten that I owe you a phone call. I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I just want to go on record that I too will be donating because football, to me, is near and dear to me, seeing how I played football for many years. And I do understand that being able to feed the football players is something that we should, we should be able to do because I was one of the beef, you know, beefy up front that ate a lot. And so it's not cheap feeding a football team. You'd go broke. But I just want to let you know that I will be donating some sort of funds to the Football Parent Association. So at least that can be addressed.
Again, thank you all for your donations. And if you guys would like to sponsor us for anything as well, sponsor a meal, that also will be appreciated as well. But thank you again all for your donations.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, this is the auditor. I'd like to also remind the public that the Reynoldsburg Raiders are having a pre-open fundraiser at Swenson's, and it doesn't cost anything to get a ticket, and they receive $5 for every ticket. So if we could get 100 people to sign up for that event at Swenson's for their grand opening on the first and second of this month, that would greatly benefit our football team.
Thank you for letting us know about that fundraiser. That's important. Do we have any other comments from council? Mayor Begany, do you have any comments this evening?
Not at this time, but I'll jump in at a few points later on.
Okay. Molly, do we have any other communications this evening?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our motions. We have a motion to approve a resolution to establish, implement, and enforce a zero tolerance policy against any act which may support the sex trafficking of humans in the city of Reynoldsburg. Councilmember Strickland, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. A motion to approve a resolution to establish, implement, and enforce a zero tolerance policy against any act which may support the sex trafficking of humans in the city of Reynoldsburg. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery in which victims are forced to work in various forms of exploitation, including debt bondage, forced marriage, labor, and commercial sexual exploitation that are induced through force, fraud, coercion. The city of Reynoldsburg is committed to becoming a trafficking-free zone, ensuring that our community is prepared to recognize signs of human trafficking. And whereas, an increase in tourist-seeking entertainment within the city of Reynoldsburg increases the potential risk of exploitation in human trafficking. Traffickers are optimistic hunters, and they see entertainment events and the people who attend these events as an opportunity for huge profits with very little risk of penalty, of punishment. And whereas, due to isolating nature, many individuals are unaware that trafficking exists in their neighborhoods. The first step in eliminating human trafficking in our community is to educate others. We must work diligently to ensure that all frontline industries are aware of this issue and how to spot it. Being resolved by the council of the city of Reynoldsburg, we, the city of Reynoldsburg, do hereby proclaim that we will continue our efforts to combat the commercial sexual exploitation of our children and vulnerable adults and mitigate the associate public, associated public safety, economic and health risks to our community. In collaboration with the Child Trafficking Solution Project, the U.S. Institute Against Human Trafficking and Other Anti-Human Trafficking Organizations to combat commercial sexual exploitation through comprehensive education of our staff and the implementation and enforcement of a zero tolerance policy against any act which may support human trafficking. And asks all citizens of the city of Reynoldsburg, join us in promotion a shift way from the culture of tolerance towards human trafficking passed on this day, the 25th of January, 2021. Madam President, I know that we have, I believe, a speaker that's in the, a guest that's in chambers. Is it possible they can speak at this time?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Begany, Council President Jenkins, members of council. Before I begin, I first want to thank Molly for going into the archives to pull all the resolutions that I had submitted that seemed to have been lost during the period when I was on council between 2012 and 2015. My name is Cornelius McGrady III, resident, Cornelius McGrady III residing at 921 Zeller Circle, Pickrenton, Ohio. As the founder of the Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking Coalition, I want to first thank Councilwoman Strickland for this opportunity to come before this council to provide a brief overview of the coalition and of its accomplishments. When you look at the history of the Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking Coalition, otherwise known as RYHTC, our awareness initiatives first began in 2009 at the request of the former DECA advisor. I began mentoring the DECA students on human trafficking, missing children, and sexual harassment prevention, and we adopted the slogan, "Stop the Force." Not only did this result in a statewide human trafficking initiative for some of this, not only did this project develop into a national project for some students, but a national project for DECA students as well. Our first two school assemblies on human trafficking and missing children were in collaboration with former U.S. Attorney Carter Stewart and the Ohio Attorney General's Office and was featured in U.S. Attorney Carter Stewart's Quarterly Community Outreach Newsletter. Due to some schools curricular changes in 2012, the training moved to an after-school program, and thus, the Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking Coalition was established and has operated under the school's district tax identification number since May 2013. From the beginning and operating in under the brand of RYHTC, we have educated over 5,500 individuals within our schools, our communities, within Central Ohio, Fort Knox, Kentucky, Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, and Fort Dix, New Jersey. However, once again, due to the changing times, we are again rebranding to Reynoldsburg Diversity, Inclusion, Equity Youth Council, otherwise known as DICE, D-I-C-E. From the beginning, RYHTC has not only focused on the health and wellness of not only the Reynoldsburg youth within our community, but Ohio's youth as well. These awareness initiatives have been accomplished through collaboration with numerous entities such as the Freeman Project, the Ohio State Human Trafficking Task Force, the Ohio Attorney General's Office, former U.S. District Attorney Carter Stewart, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, NICMIC, the FBI, BCI, former Franklin County Judge Paul Herbert, Jewish Family Services, the Ohio State Highway Patrol, the Reynoldsburg Police Department, and numerous other advocates and survivors while mentoring to Reynoldsburg High School students on the domestic violence cycle with the emphasis on missing children and human trafficking. Since 2013, Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking students had received certificates of recognition from Congresswoman Joyce Beatty, Ohio Attorney General Mike DeWine, Ohio Senator Richard Portman, State Representative Richard Brown, former State Representative Teresa Fetter, State Representative Herschel Craig, and former State Representative Heather Bishop, and of course, the Reynoldsburg School Board. For their awareness efforts and recognition in the Ohio, for their awareness in record, in record, for their awareness efforts, they were recognized in the Ohio Attorney General's 2015 Annual Human Trafficking Report. As a result of the ongoing collaborative training initiatives, on January 17, 2015, the Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking Coalition was the recipient of the Ohio Liberators Award for their awareness efforts and further recognized as the first after-school youth group in Central Ohio to recognize this prestigious award. Another collaborative effort is with the Rotary Action Against Slavery, otherwise known as RAGAS, R-A-G-A-S, an international organization under the arm of the Rotary International. As a board member of the Rotary, of the Reynoldsburg Pickrenton Rotary, DICE is now collaborating with RAGAS to bring forth a human trafficking conference to this district. With all the awareness initiatives and accomplishments and recognitions and arrests that have taken place in Pickrenton during our tenure, one could easily believe that Reynoldsburg Youth Human Trafficking Coalition's mission is complete and that Reynoldsburg is a trafficking-free zone. A trafficking-free zone, you may ask? Possibly. However, it is not, I am not that naive to think that our mission is complete as there is still much work to do towards the eradication of this criminal industry. As most of you are aware, slavery is commonly, is commonly thought to be a thing of the past. However, human sex trafficking still exists today globally and throughout the United States, all 50 states, I might add, when traffickers use forced-fora coercion to control other people for the purpose of engagement in a commercial sex act. Ohio is particularly vulnerable to human trafficking because it has both large urban centers, rural counties, and large transit and immigration population, as well as five major highways with easy access to other communities and cities and Canada as well, with over 1,000 Ohio children projected to be trafficking, to be victims of human sex trafficking every year. Ohio is ranked as high as fifth among all states in total reported human trafficking cases, with Toledo being identified as fourth highest ranking city in the nation for recruiting victims into the illegal trade. Additionally, it has been reported, I want you to listen to what I'm saying here. It hasn't been, it has been reported that the Bryce and Livingston corridor has been reported as one of the top five central trafficking locations in Columbus, which is approximately two-tenths of a mile from the Livingston Police Hub, four-tenths of a mile from the Livingston Avenue High School, and 1.2 miles from the Baldwin Middle School. Everyone has a role to play in the eradication of this criminal industry. Are you ready to become a change agent? And finally, in the words of William Wilberforce, "You may choose to look the other way, but you could never say again after today you did not know." Thank you, Councilwoman Strickland and your council members. This resolution demonstrates your stance against human trafficking and the willingness to support it. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGrady, for bringing that forth. I appreciate it. If someone that needs help, that's called, you know, caught up in the human trafficking that, you know, would like to reach out for help, is there a number that we can share with the public regarding that, that information?
Yes, there's the National Human Trafficking Hotline, which is 1-888-888-3434-888. They will in turn redirect the information back to Ohio to assist that individual, or, or just to send an anonymous tip as well. Same number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. McGrady?
Yes, I don't have a question, but a statement to make. Thank you, Mac, for coming out and speaking. I attended the seminar, I think, two weeks ago, or two or three weeks ago, with the Ohio Attorney General's Office. They, it's online, but it is in Ohio, it was done. And I was surprised to find out that it's a $90 billion business globally. It's billion with the B, and that is, and we, our country, is one of the leading one. But this, most of the business is done in the third world countries. But we are also a victim, and also there are a lot of people within Ohio and within the communities are the victim of this heinous crime. I think all of us, definitely, as Mac says, we have a role to play. And thank you for bringing this up, and it is very, very important. Then whatever we can do, I think we should do.
I have an alibi.
Thank you for, thank you, Councilman Pacarrel. Annually, I tend the, she's now Senator Fetter. She has the Human Trafficking Conference, and on the petition that they have, they list the Reynoldsburg City Council as a partner towards the eradication. That's because of my involvement there for so many years. So I say that to you to, if you don't know, I'm gonna, when they resume in-person training, I would like the mayor to, you know, wave their hand, say, "Follow me," and everybody come down for the free conference. And, and I will make sure this gets out there. Matter of fact, I'm gonna email USAT that you've come across with a free human trafficking, trafficking-free zone, and I'm gonna let the senator know as well. Because in addition to that, you're sending that to, you're sending that to to your constituents in the other municipalities that we're a zero-tolerance community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. It's very important, and I appreciate Mr. McGrady coming to speak to us. I know he's been working on this for several years and working with the students in Reynoldsburg, spending a lot of hours and volunteering with this topic that is so important. So I really appreciate that. Do we have any other comments?
Nope. Just want to say thank you to Mr. McGrady for coming forward, and thank you to Shannet for introducing this resolution.
May I have a motion?
I've got a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. It's, 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 you know, good to have something like this, but I'm more concerned of what are we gonna do with this? So perhaps this is directed to Attorney Shook, where we say in here that we're going to implement and enforce a zero-tolerance policy. What does that mean? What, what, what don't we have, or what do we have a tolerance for now that we need to strengthen? So I mean, I, I think, you know, when we start talking resolutions and so forth, you know, a lot of them are feel-good, patting ourselves on the back, we've done something, but what are we gonna do? So what does a, what does the implementation and enforcement of a zero-tolerance policy look like? What are we lacking? What do we need to, to add into this, just to give it some actual strength and merit to it?
Yeah, I think, so we met with, I think it was last month or a couple of months ago, each member of council, and we talked about criminal activity in that Bryce Road Livingston Corridor, that corridor that Mr. McGrady was talking about. And, and one of the biggest reasons why we brought that up is because we wanted to be able to explain to council members why it was so important for our officers to be out in that area where we have instances of violent crime that in many cases can go hand-in-hand with human trafficking. In addition, you know, we have identified, and I don't want to put any particular name of a business out there, but we have identified at least one business in that corridor who we are working with to put in measures to ensure that that business is not being used as a place where human trafficking is accepted. So we are putting in measures, I could probably outside of the confines of a council meeting, go into a little bit more detail about it, and I'm sure the chief could as well. But that is an area of significant focus for us. In addition, and I think this kind of piggybacks off what we're gonna be talking about later on with adult-oriented businesses. You know, we changed our zoning code last year to ensure that no adult-oriented business could go in that Bryce Livingston Corridor. Across the street on the Columbus side, there have been two adult-oriented businesses that had to be shut down in the last four years because of secondary effects associated with those businesses. That includes human trafficking, drug trafficking, and violent offenses. So that is an area we are deeply, deeply focused on.
It looks like the chief is there to make some comments, mask off, and everything ready to talk, so I'd love to hear what, what you've got to share on this, chief.
Yeah, I just have a few quick comments to support what Mr. McGrady had said about that Bryce Road Corridor. I can confirm to you, it's not just talk. That is an issue in that corridor. We do currently have investigations ongoing from activity in that area without going into further detail, but I do wanna support what he said. It, it is happening. It is the, the truth of what's going on in that area, and we support any initiatives that can, can help victims in human trafficking. That's all I have to say.
I just have one final thing, and I'm, this is my baby, so I can talk all night long, but to your question, Councilman Cotner, collaboration between the school because, can be, I would suggest collaboration with the school to take the online course because teachers have to take the online course. Law enforcement, well, right here with law enforcement, law enforcement can coordinate with, with the mayor and streamline that down to the employees if that's his desire to, to, to continue and strengthen the no-tolerance zone, not only externally, but internally with the employees as well, just, just as a side, just throwing that out there. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like for us to look into the training that would be beneficial and educational for us. Oh, I know I have attended some of Mr. McGrady's work that he did with the students in Reynoldsburg. I was volunteering some hours and spending and learning about human trafficking some time ago, and it's a very important subject, and there's a lot to understand. I know my husband works in logistics and their employees are trained to learn and understand as truck drivers that work in his company to understand and pick up on what they may be able to see in that business as far as trucking and transportation and highways and, you know, you see things at gas stations and things like that. So I think we can all learn something from the training that, that is being offered. Does anyone else on council have anything else they'd like to add? Molly, we don't have anyone else to speak this evening, do we? In council chambers? On this subject?
Well.
Okay. Okay. May I have a motion to approve this motion?
I moved.
Councilmember Pacarrel, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a resolution to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King and his day of service. Councilmember Baker, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm proud to read this resolution in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. I know people have heard about him and what he meant to the civil rights movement and the fact that he became more than just the leader of the movement, he became a symbol of a movement that we still look up to to this day when we're fighting for civil, civil rights. And there was a quote that stood out to me that he has said once, and it said, "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualism, individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." And in this time, in this era, those words speaks very values because we kind of are in the day where there's people that rather concern for themselves instead of for the general public. And so I believe his, his memory serves that we should serve all and not just ourselves. And so the, I'm gonna read the resolution into the minutes. A motion to approve resolution to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King and his day of action of service. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to achievement of civil rights and public service. He believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all, and challenged all citizens to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of America. And whereas Dr. King recognized that everyone can be, be great because everyone can serve, and during his lifetime, he encouraged all Americans to serve their neighbors and their communities. And whereas in 1994, Congress initiated the King Day of Service, in nationwide effort to transform the federal holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. into a day of community service. Ground in Dr. King's teachings that helps solve social, excuse me, social problems while focusing on bringing people together and breaking down barriers that have divided us as a nation. And whereas thousands of Ohio residents use Dr. Martin Luther King Day as a day not, as a day on, not a day off, including the Reynoldsburg City Council, who handed out PPE units to community members. And whereas hundreds of thousands of volunteers in cities and towns across the nation participated in King Day services projects in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and Puerto Rico, and whereas nonprofit organizations, volunteer managers, AmeriCorps, and senior corps members across the nation have organized hundreds of projects for volunteers and engaged in service honoring the goals of Dr., uh, the goals of King Day service. And whereas the King Day service, which was fell on January 18th this year, was a time for people of Reynoldsburg to recognize Dr. King's teaching. And advancing equality and opportunity for all by contributing their own time and talents in a day of service. And whereas the King Day of Service is an excellent opportunity to take the first steps in making service a regular activity in the lives of Reynoldsburg residents, it is an important day to encourage each citizen to take part in service that will benefit communities and neighborhoods and provide a fitting memorial to life of Dr. Martin Luther King. Therefore, let it be resolved by the council of the city of Reynoldsburg, where we do hereby recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Day Junior, Junior Day, sorry, as a day of service in the city of Reynoldsburg, and urge our citizens to honor the memory of Dr. King to put his teachings into action by participating in the King Day of Service and to find ways to give back to our community. And I want to say this, that his teachings isn't something that we should just recognize on his birthday or in the month of February, but his teachings is something that we should honor every day of the week, 24/7 each year, because these teachings teaches us to be humanity, to our fellow citizens, to our fellow neighbors, in that we together can end racism, we together can end inequality, not just in the United States, not just in Reynoldsburg, but throughout the world. So if anybody would like to say anything, go ahead. Nope.
Are there any questions, comments? Yes, thank you, Councilmember Baker, for bringing this forward. As you stated before, some of us was there handing out PPEs for our community to make sure that it was a day on and a day of service. So I appreciate everyone coming out and, you know, participating in the Martin Luther King Day. Just us, just being out there, people saw us being out there and giving to our community, you know, being involved. And so for those that came out and participated, thank you so much, but we have to continue the work that we are doing in our community and making sure those that do not have a voice, we have to be their voice and, and speak up for them. So thank you.
So can I go next?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Baker, for bringing this up. I think Dr. King's birthday is important 24/7, but this year is much more important than any other time in history. We had a January 6th in our face, and immediately there was, we saw how, how it happened out there, how the impact of racism we have seen in those days in their time. And in the, immediately we had a Dr. King, and he reminded us how inclusivity, what inclusivity is, and what this country stands for. So I think I totally agree, and we should practice 24/7, not only on one day. I think Dr. King laid by an example, and we coming out and doing some kind of service is part of it, but I think we should continue to do every other, every day and every second of our life. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve this motion?
Madam President. I'll second it then.
Councilwoman Strickland, and we have a second from Councilmember Baker. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a motion to affirm the appointment of Doug McCullough to the Coda Board. The mayor appoints members to the Coda Board and council affirms those appointments. Mr. McCullough is part of the meeting and can further elaborate on this appointment.
Madam President, before Doug McCullough speaks, just want to say a few words about this process. Doug is going to be our representative on the Coda Board and be an advocate for the city of Reynoldsburg as we move forward into what hopefully will be the BRT or Bus Rapid Transit Line that will be going from Columbus and hopefully eventually all the way out even into Etna Township. We know that poverty is very much linked to job opportunity and transportation plays a big role in the city of Columbus and in the surrounding areas, and with the opportunity to provide transportation for those in low-income areas or for anyone in general really to find a way to better employment is going to be a key, and Doug is going to be a fabulous advocate for the city of Reynoldsburg in this. In addition to that, anytime that we can get more people on buses and fewer people in cars, it will be an environmental thing that will work well for the entire community and really the planet as well. And with that, I'll let Doug say a few words on it. I know he has not had a meeting yet, so I don't think he has any opportunity to answer too many questions. But I thought it was important for you to not only just read the name, but also put a, put a face to the name for this very important and well-deserved role. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor Begany. Good evening, members of council. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's a great honor to be asked to join the Coda Board and to represent Reynoldsburg. I arrived in the Columbus area in 1999, immediately moved to Reynoldsburg. It's the only community in Central Ohio I have lived in. We are lifers. We have raised four children in this community, and I have relationships with people at Coda, people in Morpsey. I'm Chief Information Officer and a technology person, very active in smart cities, intelligent communities, intelligent transportation, and smart mobility kinds of issues. I am very comfortable with many of the interests of Coda recently, especially with regard to the major corridors that our region is benefiting from now and about to benefit from. Of primary interest and concern to me is that the city of Reynoldsburg is well-represented. I want to be in the room so that as things go past that Reynoldsburg wasn't necessarily asked about, someone is there to raise their voice. I want to bring things into the room that all of you certainly have an interest in. And I am fully aware of the impact that transportation and transportation policies and routes and those kinds of things can have on a community. So I'm very interested in Reynoldsburg doing well. I'm, of course, also interested in the rest of the region. And Coda's success is success for all of us. So I, I'm very happy to be in the position to join that board and to represent this community in any way that I can. So thank you for your confidence.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from council?
Madam President, I'd like to say something very briefly, because I know we still gotta get on with the agenda, but this position is very important on the Coda Board because when Coda decides to change routes and increase fees and everything like that, we need somebody on this board that will look out for the interests, not just for Reynoldsburg, but for all central Ohio, basically. Cause I remember going to the Coda meeting when they were, uh, looking at raising fees on residents. And this was during the time during the Great Recession. And going there versed in my concern about raising the fee at a time where people were really struggling. So this is a very important, um, um, appointment, even though it's to Coda, but it's very important.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council or any questions?
Yes, Madam President, um, really quickly here. So, um, thank you, Doug, for taking on this role, this responsibility, right? Because transportation does matter. And when you talk about smart mobility and smart transportation and making sure we have the right, the correct route, um, and cause it's going to impact the Reynoldsburg residents. So it's very important. So I look forward towards the work that you're going to be doing, providing updates to city council on how we are moving along and any discussions, um, that needs to come forth. So thank you so much for taking on this new leadership role.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from council this evening? I too would like to thank you for taking on this role and I appreciate you, um, serving and representing Reynoldsburg. And can't wait to see what, um, becomes of this, um, connection that you're making with Morpsy and with Coda. Um, I look forward to, um, hearing all about what the possibilities are for Reynoldsburg residents and students as, um, we bridge the gap that we didn't have before as far as having someone represent Reynoldsburg with Coda. So thank you for serving. May I have a motion to approve this motion this evening?
Oh, no.
I still move.
Councilwoman Lawson Row, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Strickland, is, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our reports. City Attorney Shook, do you have a report this evening?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam President, uh, wanted to give, uh, council a year in review on some important items of legislation that were passed in the year two thousand twenty. As, as I don't, I'm sure everybody here knows it was a difficult year, um, you know, for everybody in the community. And, uh, we felt the same impact here at City Hall, but we still wanted to make, uh, some positive, um, impact on the community with what we were able to do. Uh, last year, city council passed for what I consider to be four very important items of legislation. And I wanted to give you some feedback on how, uh, those items of legislation have been implemented and what the results have been. Uh, I'm going to start with the, uh, the Recovery Court Initiative. Uh, last year, council did pass legislation to accept a grant from Franklin County Adam H. We were able in the summer to hire a criminal justice administrator, recovery court administrator. Her name is Maria Watson and Maria has been able to do exceptional work, not just in terms of getting a recovery court off the ground, but, uh, she has been helping individuals, uh, who are going through a diversion program or who are placed on probation through mayor's court. Uh, and she has been very instrumental in arranging community service opportunities for people, most especially at the Heart Food Pantry. At this time, we have, uh, four participants in our recovery court program. Uh, all four seem to be doing very well, uh, but they are very early in their recovery. Right now, their requirements are that they need to attend, you know, certain alcohol and drug counseling meetings. They need to come in for alcohol and drug testing. For individuals who are here on alcohol-related cases, we have them placed on a SCRAM unit which monitors whether they are consuming alcohol, uh, and they report to Maria on a regular basis. Right now, again, we're early in the program, but it seems to be, uh, getting off on the right foot. A- and we believe that there will be additional participants in the year two thousand twenty-one. Uh, for the, uh, the vacant property registration ordinance, council passed that, uh, early last, uh, summer. And that would be the chapter thirteen ninety-nine of our codified ordinances. Uh, the first thing that we did after council passed that ordinance was attempt to identify properties that we would suspect as vacant, either as properties that had been reported to the city, uh, or properties where we know, uh, there had been no water usage indicating that those properties might be vacant. We investigated, uh, those properties as much as we're permitted to do, uh, through our code department. And we had a lot of background work that was performed by our administrative staff in the service department and in the city attorney's office. And I would like to give, uh, special recognition to Sherri Starr in the city attorney's office and to Debbie Keys in the service department, both of whom have put in countless hours into the vacant property registration program. Uh, originally, we identified approximately one hundred and fifty-three, uh, suspected vacant properties. We were able to determine that sixty-four of those properties were not vacant. Uh, we determined that, uh, for various reasons, either because they went on sale, they released out, uh, demolished, or, uh, we were able to determine that they were being used for a proper purpose in their district. We currently have thirty-seven properties that have been registered as vacant properties in the city of Reynoldsburg. And we currently have forty-three properties that we have determined are vacant, but are currently unregistered. And in some of those cases, we have a very difficult time finding the owners of those properties, but we are working diligently to ensure that they are notified of their obligation to register. Uh, in addition, we had eight properties that qualified for various exemptions under our code. This is an ordinance that has taken a significant amount of time, um, you know, for both the city attorney's office and for the service department, but I think it's been worthwhile. We have been able to get properties sold, used for their intended purpose. And in some cases, be able to notify owners, uh, of the fantastic real estate market we have in Reynoldsburg right now and let them know that it's something that they can take advantage of. The, uh, another major ordinance that was passed by council last year would be the anti-discrimination ordinance. Uh, I can happily report to council that we have received, uh, only one complaint last year regarding an alleged instance of improper discrimination. It was a complaint, uh, based on race. And as the ordinance requires, we referred that individual to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, uh, because the state law prohibits race-based discrimination and they can provide greater remedies. Uh, we did not receive any other complaints of discrimination. Now, I don't want to, I, I think that the biggest reason why we haven't received those is because we are an inclusive community. But another reason could be that there's just not enough information out there for people to know that they could make a complaint. But that is certainly, you know, where we're at right now with that particular ordinance. Uh, the fourth major ordinance that council passed in two thousand twenty, uh, was the civilian review board ordinance. And I expect that at your next council meeting, we will have each ward member's nominee for participation on that review board and the mayor's nominees for participation. Uh, we have with the nominees, we will be presenting met all the requirements under the ordinance. And I think we're really excited to see, see what happens with that as we get it off the ground. With a couple of these, I want to be clear, you know, these are, these are new things for the city. And with some of them, we are noticing, uh, how we might be able to make changes to these ordinances in the future that will better benefit the city. And I would, uh, go ahead and notify council today that I expect that at some point in the next couple of months, we'll be presenting some changes to the vacant property ordinance, uh, to be able to address, uh, efficiency and privacy with respect to the administration of that ordinance. But, uh, with that, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions about, you know, what we are doing with those at this time and how effective they've been.
Does anyone have any question?
I wanted to make a super quick comment. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Attorney Shook for the update. And I wanted to say that I was, uh, I was able to attend virtually the BZBA meeting, uh, this past week. And I know it was really the first big, uh, meeting where they had appeals for the vacant property. And, uh, obviously they had some, uh, they had a learning curve with, with that, uh, with, with that, uh, piece of, uh, legislation. And I just want to commend, uh, both the BZBA and Attorney Shook on how they, uh, sort of on the fly, changed to, uh, to help address, uh, privacy concerns and whatnot, things that, that Attorney Shook said we will, uh, we'll see in changes coming up, but they did an excellent job in that meeting. Kind of going from zero to sixty, trying to, uh, address those on the fly. So just want to say that real quick. Just kudos.
Madam President.
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Strickland.
So thank you, um, Madam President, and thank you, Chris, um, Attorney Shook. And, um, I, I appreciate all the work that everyone has done, um, regarding these four big huge, you know, ordinance that was passed last year. Um, one of the things that I feel is though we have not, um, you know, in the past, we, we have not been able to take account of what has been done. This is probably one of the first times I heard about the four ordinance that's been passed and given an update. So thank you for that information. I appreciate that. You know, just with vacant property, you know, that, that is a huge thing here in Reynoldsburg. It really was never addressed, uh, before in a way, um, that we are addressing it now. And so thank you. Yes, it will be a, a learning curve, uh, but because we are taking it hands-on and we are, uh, going from zero to sixty real quick, um, it's okay. People have to get, um, adjusted to change and it's okay to change. You know, we talk about, we want to make our, our city the best city there is. And so we do have to, um, address these vacant properties here, um, because for so long it just haven't been addressed. And so I commend you, um, and your team for taking, you know, taking this work on because I know it's a lot of work to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Thank you, Attorney Shook for that report. It was, like, extensive and appreciate the updates. Next, we'll have the clerk of court report. Clerk Prasher, please.
Yes, Madam President. The clerk reported that the monies collected from the courts held on December third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth amounted to thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the West Licking Fire District, Councilmember Baker.
You are muted back, Councilmember Baker.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, in your package, you have the data statistics for the month of December and the end of the year statistics on how the fire district is doing. And Reynoldsburg is once again doing very good in response to calls in our portion of the district. And with the, the growth that is coming and that is currently in, uh, our portion of the district, this is, um, really important that we are able to keep, uh, the times for the runs down. And that's why, uh, building the new firehouse that will be coming on Taylor Road is so important because this will help keep, um, times for the, uh, runs down and also improve even more when we're able to increase, um, staff in, in the district because growth is all around us and so we want to be prepared for, um, for it. So, so just keep a lookout for more information about the new firehouse that's coming down the pipe.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our report from Development Parks and Recreation Committee, and that is Councilmember Baker.
Oh, I guess I'll keep the microphone. Um, this is the Development Parks and Recreation Committee, um, on this day, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Member in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Pacorrel, myself, and you, Madam President. The first thing on the agenda for the committee is an ordinance considering, um, excuse me, consenting to the annexation of certain real property located at US Route forty identified as parcel number zero one zero dash zero one seven four six six dash zero zero dot zero zero and zero one zero dash zero one eight zero three zero dash zero zero point zero 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 and zero one zero dash zero one eight zero three zero dash zero zero dot zero zero one in Licking County and adopting permanent zoning. Uh, Director Bash, Boucher, would you like to comment on this legislation?
Chairman Baker, I'm going to let the mayor speak real quick and then I'm going to get into a little bit of detail about, uh, this annexation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Councilman Baker. Uh, this is going to be a piece of territory. For those of you at home that don't have a parcel listing next to you, this is the land that will be located right across the street uh, from the Department of Agriculture. Uh, there will be a number of housing units in the southwestern city school district uh, that will be adding, uh, not only residential, but also some commercial activity in that area as well. I should have some, um, I guess for the lack of a better way of putting it, some pretty pictures for you on Wednesday to get a really good idea of what it actually is going to look at. Uh, I have spoken with the superintendent, the treasurer, and a couple of board members from, uh, southwestern city schools. And we have talked with them about the impact that this will have on their community. Pretty much as soon as I've gotten the information, we've gotten a call with them. I've also spoken that in the township uh, to make sure that they understand the growth that it is coming their way. Uh, I, I can take questions. Are we after Andrew, uh, Director Boucher speaks? So we can take questions at that time.
Director Baffert?
Thank you, Chairman Baker. Uh, Madam President, and other members of council. Uh, so this is before you, as you could tell, back in, uh, October, November, uh, we were hearing this. Uh, we first passed and said that you, there were utilities available. This is also part of a agreement, annexation agreement that we have with Etna Township. Uh, so it was a type-two annexation. It is now back, uh, to us for three readings for the final, uh, piece of annexation. A part of this will also be the zoning that we will bring in with that. Two distinct zonings, the south parcel will be East Main Street District and the two north parcels will be suburban residential. Uh, after this, they will submit a major site plan. But it'll be a mixture of commercial retail development along Main Street. Some rental-type housing as a buffer zone to more of the suburban residential housing. About six different varieties. There'll be a townhome model, cottages and courtyards, your traditional single-family home, like your MI-type development. And then there'll be some estate lot homes, uh, all from a different variety of price points. So it'll be extremely inclusive, a lot of park space, boulevards. I know that the map kind of got sent to you guys and, uh, we'll share a, a little bit later as they continue to formulate and pick the types of housing product that they're going to, uh, put into this development a little bit later on. But we're really excited. It's a great project for us. Uh, this is being developed by Simonello Development Incorporated. Uh, this is the same development group that did the Pinnacle in Grove City. Uh, we won't have a golf course, but they will have a great, uh, small community center, uh, park space. So it'll be a really great asset, I think, for the community. And, uh, clearly there's a housing shortage in central Ohio and this is, uh, us doing our part, but as well as making it mixed use. The architecture is going to be influenced by the Department of Agriculture, which is across the road. So it'll be a really attractive development. Uh, this will be basically the first phase. The goal is to continue tie it in, uh, off to Summit Road. And then they'll have some other expansion plans on the east side of, uh, Summit Road as well. Uh, but those are all future phases. So right now we're just dealing with three parcels in the south. Outside of that, I'll take any questions that anybody may have.
I'd like to just say something real quick that, um, I played the golf course at Pinnacle and the houses that they have around there are really nice houses. So, um, they, from what I've seen, they've done quality work. So I look forward to this development, actually.
Tune in Wednesday at twelve o'clock and you might see. Tune in Wednesday at 12 o'clock and you might see.
Hey, y'all should really work on them getting a golf course. That would be really nice, but that's just a little personal pressure.
Well, we'll add it to our list.
Anybody on? Is anybody on? Anybody on committee like to ask some questions to Mayor or Director Boucher? Anybody on council?
Just, can I just verify to, again, the plan and the strategy of getting water and sewer to these locations?
Yeah, so we underdid a minor study with EMHNT. They have a line that's right there in front of the Department of Agriculture. Their goal is to take that line and run north and then fill out that space. Anything to the north, there's a line that's on Taylor that they will figure out and run back through the neighborhood. And also another one that's at Summit, right in front of the Summit Road campus. There's three different points of entry and they'll all be tied together when it's complete, which also allows for future expansion to the east. When it was originally done, this was called the Refugee Act. And about fifty years ago, they decided where this was going to go. So we're just following suit and following that original plan based on topography.
Also, I hope this development pushes the Ohio Department of Transportation to put a light at the intersection of Summit and Main Street. I know I inquired a couple of years ago and they told me that there was not enough traffic to warrant a traffic light, but with that development and future developments coming in Aetna, I hope this will give proof that one at that intersection will be greatly appreciated.
Certainly. If anybody's been up to Westerville along Cleveland Avenue at Westar, where they're building a lot of stuff, Brew Burgers, the local cantina that's up there, this will be very similar to that kind of feel and that type of sizing where we'll have commercial development, great office park type space, great income bringing into the city from the jobs prospect, but as well as housing that basically is, is back to the rear. And there'll be a great sizing. And I think what sets this development apart amongst just regular single family homes is we are focused in also on missing middle housing, and that's housing that's more unnecessarily purely multifamily driven, but certainly townhome condominium type styles, adding in great flair. So six different varieties of for sale product. So it's, it's going to be a very diverse mix of housing, which I think we're really excited for.
Councilman Baker, we've had conversations with Ryan Andrews at EMHNT with our transportation committee, talking about what you were just referring to about Summit and that general vicinity. And as we further develop this plan, working with our engineers, we'll figure out the best methods to get people in and out, not yet Summit, but at this intersection as well, across from the Department of Agriculture. We'll get it, we'll get it looking really nice and get flow exactly what it needs to be. So that way, the traffic will not be a major issue. It might actually also help out kind of reducing some of the speeds on the, on that section in between Taylor and Wagner that is thirty-five, that some people don't always go that slow.
Is there any other questions for Director Boucher or the mayor regarding this piece of legislation from the committee or from council? Okay, seeing none. I like to make a motion that we forward this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Rowe. Is any other further discussion? Okay, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it, this will be moved forward to council for its first reading. As there is no other business in front of the committee, I turn this back over to you, Council, Madam President.
Councilmember Baker, you have another item?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to refresh my agenda. For some reason, it didn't show the other page.
Chairman Baker, it looks like Director Boucher would like to be recognized.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead, Director Boucher.
Thank you, Chairman Baker. What, one, one quick clarification, I just got a text, somebody was watching. I think the mayor accidentally misspoke. It's not Southwestern City Schools, that would be here in Grove City. It's actually Southwest Licking, but I just wanted to make that clarification so it was right to the record.
I didn't know we were expanding.
Stage will be calling the mayor and yelling at him if that's the case.
Okay. Now that my agenda fully loaded, there is a second item on the agenda for the committee. It's an ordinance to approve an application made by Maplewood Farms, LRD, to have certain land located within the city of Reynoldsburg, located on Summit Road. Permanent parcel number one two five dash zero two six six one six dash zero zero point zero zero designated for placement in an agricultural district. Clerk Prasher, would you read any comments on this legislation?
Yes, Council, this is a renewal application for this property owner. They have two parcels. These two parcels are directly north of the parcel that just came before you that's being annexed. One is in the township and the one on the furthest north side is in the city. Agricultural districts allow the property owner to have reduced property taxes as long as they are using their property for agricultural purposes. And these, this request again is a renewal, and it is for five years.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this legislation? Any from council? Okay, seeing none, I move that we forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacorrel. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Not opposed, I, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading as there is no other business in front of the Department of Parks and Recreation Committee. I turn the meeting back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, and that's Councilmember Bryant.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for January 25th, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, Councilmember Pacorrel, myself, and President Jenkins. Item one is an ordinance to amend Chapter 503 of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg to provide fair housing opportunities for individuals and their families regardless of the source of income to pay for such accommodations. This ordinance is being discussed as a work session only. Attorney Shook, would you like to go ahead and lead the discussion tonight?
Thank you, Councilmember Bryant. At the, at the request of Councilmember Strickland, I had prepared an amendment to Chapter 503, which is our anti-discrimination ordinance. The, the changes in the ordinance don't appear to be significant, but they are. We add in a definition for source of income and what that means. And instead of adding source of income as a, as part of a protected class, we included that under Section 503.07 for unlawful discriminatory housing practices. So it operates essentially as a protected class without being identified specifically as one in the ordinance. And that's because it was only meant to apply to that Section 503.07. It wasn't meant to apply to the sections for employment and for public accommodations. I have, we've been very fortunate to have two individuals who I invited to attend tonight's meeting who are strong advocates for organizations that are probably on opposing sides as it relates to this ordinance and what its effect would be. They are both very accomplished attorneys, and I've heard them speak, and they are probably the strongest advocates you will find in the central Ohio area regarding this kind of legislation. The first is attorney Carly Booze, and she is a Reynoldsburg resident. She is also the executive director of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. And the second is attorney Dimitri Hatzifatinos. And Dimitri is an attorney who represents several landlords in the city of Reynoldsburg, but also as a representative for the Columbus Apartment Association. They are both very accomplished in their professions, and I think you guys will, will all gain a lot just from hearing them speak and articulating their positions, why you should or should not take action on this legislative item. And so with that, I will turn it over to first Carly Booze.
Well, thank you, Attorney Shook. I'm going to try my best to live up to that intro. And, you know, thank you as well, Chair Bryant and councilmembers for, for just creating the space to have this discussion tonight because I do think it's a very important ordinance that's being considered across our community. So as Attorney Shook said, I'm Carly. I'm here tonight as the executive director of the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio. I'm also a resident, I own a home over on Marbar. You may know the alliance's work as well. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that advocates for the tools that we need to reduce Franklin County's 54,000 household affordability gap. Now, we do not represent any single industry or any single stakeholder. Instead, what we do is we advocate for housing solutions that benefit our neighbors, our neighborhoods, and our region as a whole. And the type of housing that best fits their family's unique need. It also results in deeply entrenched racial economic divides are even more severe. We are the eighth most income segregated place in America, and we have some of the highest levels of separation between college graduates and working class individuals in the country. And importantly, we know too that that segregation is not the, the natural result of individual choice or consumer preferences. Rather, that was the intended outcome of laws and restrictive covenants and government policies, both nationally and at the local level, that were intended to divide, intended to segregate our people. These laws were in fact so successful in accomplishing that purpose that even today, despite monumental shifts in the value our residents place on integration and equality, they continue to define our housing landscape. As a very quick aside, you might already be aware that under US law, discrimination takes two primary forms. There's intentional animus, which is kind of what you always think of when you think of discrimination. That's the hate in your heart type of discrimination. And then there's disparate impacts, and that's where a seemingly neutral policy unfairly protects or unfairly harms a group of people more than others because of their race or their religion or their gender or some other protecting class. Sometimes those disparate impacts are accidental, and sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're just intentional hate disguised as neutrality. But regardless of what the motivation is in that policy or that law, it always results in an unfair system. And both of these types of discrimination I'm, I'm kind of talking about now, disparate, disparate impact and intentional tend to be implicated in conversations around source of income discrimination. So it's important to have that kind of lexicon at our disposal to talk about what we're hearing tonight. The reason that's central to this debate is because landlord policies that prohibit running to individuals with non-traditional sources of income have an outsized and unfair harm on protected classes. And there's some really good examples here, right? So refusing to consider spousal support or child support unduly harms women. Refusing to consider non-wage income like retirement funds unduly harms seniors. And refusing to consider payment subsidies unduly harms veterans and African Americans. And all of this is true because those populations are statistically much more likely than others to rely on those types of income sources. So whether those policies were intentionally designed to hurt people or they just hurt people accidentally doesn't really change the fact that they do hurt people. And in fact, they perpetuate that harm, which holds our community as a whole back as well. And I would say too that this type of income discrimination is really pervasive. At the national level, HUD researchers had to comb through on average thirty-nine apartment advertisements just to find one that would accept a voucher holder. And I'll tell you, in preparing for this, this conversation tonight, I was kind of curious to see how Reynoldsburg stacked up against that national statistic. So I did a, a super quick, super lazy kind of Craigslist search for just the phrase no section eight to see what popped up. Not surprising, there was a little bit of a heat map all over eastern Franklin County. So lots and lots of no section eight discrimination ads right there on the face around kind of the Mount Carmel Hospital area on East Broad, lots that popped up in Aetna and Pataskala and Gehanna. But, but it surprised me a little bit that there weren't as many very obvious discriminatory ads in Reynoldsburg, which doesn't really align with what we know the data says about the region. And because I have way too much time on my hands, I kind of started wondering, well, what if they're just not writing this in the ads? What if they're smart enough to know not to put that down on paper? So I spent Friday calling every apartment listing in Reynoldsburg that had a management company and a phone number attached to it. And I ended up calling management companies that represent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of rental units here in Reynoldsburg. And those, I found out, A, I have no life, and B, only one, one apartment company was willing to take voucher holders. So with that in mind, you know, I think we asked, what is the outcome? What does that discrimination lead to? We know that that type of discrimination has long harsh consequences. We know that it forces people into concentrated areas of poverty, and that in turn results in lower academic performance, lower college enrollment and completion, lower adult earnings, lower adult employment rates, increased instances of single motherhood, and increased interactions with the criminal justice system as well as a number of social determinants of health that affect our physical and mental well-being. And it's important not just to look at that from kind of the individual perspective, but we also at the alliance always take that regional perspective as well. And we ask, you know, looking at this from Reynoldsburg and as, as policymakers here, what does that do to our competitiveness in the, the economic development landscape? We also know that by failing to provide that kind of housing access for families at all income levels, it makes it harder for us to support the diverse workforce pipeline that we know our job creators are asking for. And we also know that it really strains our social cohesion because we have community members that are forced to leave and forced to relocate because their income sources change as they walk through different parts of their life. That was one thing I heard Mr. Benner mention earlier is, you know, who did this protect? Is this outsiders, is it insiders? It's important to note that this legislation protects everybody, and it makes sure that people can age in place and stay within Reynoldsburg. I think, and cut me off anytime, I do think though that it's important to understand sort of the depth and the seriousness of the challenge, but it's also important to start with kind of a factual base to this conversation and can help to clear up some of the myths that I hear a lot of times as we're going into the source of income conversations. One of the great things about having a source of income ordinance is that this is a very, very mature body of work. It's, it's tried and true. We're lucky to walk in the footsteps of eighteen other states and almost a hundred other cities who have already instituted these protections, which now cover more than half of all Americans. So there's considerable research evaluating outcomes. And from all of that, we know that it's not just, it's not just a piece of ordinance that works in accomplishing its objectives. It's also something that's very workable for the landlords who are entrusted to follow it. I'm going to dive into a couple of the myths really quickly, but let me know if you'd like to debrief any of them more. So first, these ordinances do not require any property owner to reduce any rent or enter into any agreement with somebody who they don't think is capable of affording the rental rate. That's not what these are meant to do. All this does is it ensures that housing denials, when they happen, are based on the amount of income that a person receives rather than the source of that income. Second, source of income laws do not implicate either the eviction process, the security deposit relationship, or the ability of property owners to recover funds in the event of damage to property. That's covered by other laws that do other things. Third, there's also a misconception that the voucher program involves a lot of paperwork. This is one of my favorites. I don't know where it came from, but I just enrolled my kid in preschool not too awful long ago, and the paperwork to do that was so much more overwhelming than the paperwork that you need to, to participate in the section eight program. Landlords typically need to fill out a one-page form with their contact information. They have to fill out a one-page form that's actually the tenant's form, and all they have to do is countersign it. There's a one-page form that discloses whether or not there's lead, lead paint in the property, and there's a one-page form that describes how utilities get paid. So four, four pieces of paper is typically what it takes to get going on the section eight process. Aside from that, the landlord does need to fill out the hap contract. Aside from that, the landlord does need to fill out the HAP contract, which is kind of designed to mirror the lease agreement that the tenant signs. And second, or I'm sorry, a W nine form. If you want to get paid, you gotta do the W nine. And that that's pretty much it. That's the extent of the paperwork that's required. Similarly, there tends to be a pretty big misconception that vouchers are this one-way benefit, that it's just something that benefits the tenants and that the community and the landlord doesn't really get anything out of the relationship. Again, not true. This program is very, very valuable to landlords who essentially receive a payment guarantee that's not available anywhere else in the marketplace. And I gotta say to the significance of this has really been underscored by COVID nineteen. There's research out there. There's our own data internally here in central Ohio that's showing default rates right now because of COVID that are just through the roof. Sixty percent default rate in some communities and some property classes. You compare that to the properties that are owned and operated by CMHA, which have very similar subsidy structures. They have seen almost no year-over-year difference in their rent receipt rates. And they have essentially been immune from the recession, immune from the pandemic, which is incredibly valuable right now. I would also note too that CMHA provides several wraparound services to the tenants that participate in their program. These are things like social service connections, mediation, dispute resolution. What all that does is it makes for a more productive and kind of stress-free landlord-tenant relationship, which in turn leads to longer tenancy periods and lower turnover costs. Which we know are kind of the bane of landlords, right? Nobody wants to turn the unit. That's crazy expensive. This is part of a solution towards that. I want to talk very quickly about the inspection process. I think that's another area that has a lot of misconception around it. Overall, eighty-six percent of Franklin County properties that enter into the CMHA enrollment process are done finalized over and out of it in less than thirty days. And even that's a very high-end quote. A lot of times this whole process can be done within the matter of a week. For the inspection piece of it in particular. CMHA has already committed to doing that process in no later than ten days. And again, that's usually much, much quicker. It's important to observe too, though, that there are people who will report that they've experienced longer time frame. That that's not what experience they had. I would note that a lot of that timeline is within the landlord's control. And that that makes sense, right? So if you come in with an apartment that is safe that meets the inspection standards, that's processed really, really quickly. If you come in with an apartment that's dangerous, that's gonna take longer because you need to bring it up to habitability to be able to put a family in there safely. And finally, I'll say too that in this is related to the inspection process, the requirements to pass that inspection largely just mirror what landlords are already required to do under how, under Ohio law. So landlords already have to meet the habitability standards in chapter fifty-three twenty-one. They already have to meet Reynoldsburg's housing code standards. Those largely overlap with anything that CMHA would require. And this is, you know, really just a reasonable, predictable standard that's necessary to ensure that those families do have safe homes and that public subsidies are not supporting landlords. And in fact, I'll say too that there are some communities, there are some stakeholders that go forward with source of income ordinances specifically because of this inspection component. It's an extra set of eyes to do code enforcement and to keep blighted conditions off of city streets. I would guess that that dynamic, that additional kind of set of eyes is why one study showed that increases in the number of housing voucher sites correlated very strongly with increasing value in single-family property values. It's kind of a community booster. So I had intended to kind of wrap up with the study that Ms. Thurman cited earlier. Which showed a sixty-five percent swing in the number of housing denials between communities that did have source of income protections and those that did not have source of income protections. And I think that's a really powerful statistic because I just, on a personal level, there is no way that you can tell me the tenants in Washington DC are sixty-five percent more creditworthy than tenants in Fort Worth, Texas, or fifty-five percent more likely to maintain a lease. With that kind of statistic in mind. It's simply not fair to deny people housing for something that has nothing to do with their ability to maintain rent or their ability to maintain the home. And given the depth of the housing crisis that we know is taking place here in Franklin County. What the source of income regulation does is it just make sure that these minimum safety guarantees are in place. That housing decisions are based on fact, not fiction. And that we are all better equipped to further the work of Dr. King and begin to dismantle that segregation that we see so much in Franklin County and beyond. So I'm going to stop talking, I promise. I just want to say thank you one more time for bringing this board for consideration on behalf of the alliance, on behalf of myself as a resident. I I think it's great to see Reynoldsburg out front. So thanks. And I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Attorney Booze, this is Chris Shuck. I do have a question and I posed this to you before when we had a virtual meeting. The question was raised by a resident, Mr. Benner, about how we're going to enforce this. Obviously, as as a resident, you know that we don't have unlimited resources in the city of Reynoldsburg and I don't have unlimited resources in my office. Can you give me an overview as to what you think enforcement from City Hall should or could look like?
So fair housing laws are generally considered self-enforcing. You embed a private cause of action into that ordinance. So if you have a resident, if you have a tenant who feels aggrieved. They have the right to go out and retain independent counsel and pursue a claim against whoever they believe violated the law. That tends to be a very economically swift way to balance all the different competing needs that we have in the community. And that typically tends to be what we would recommend for cities considering this type of ordinance. Well, I will stick around for a while. And if there's additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. Again, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Attorney Booze. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Attorney Hatzifatinos. You have just as much time as as Carly is. Feel free to use it.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Shuck, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Members of Council. Attorney Booze is an excellent policy advocate. And I'm not sure that I'm going to be quite as polished as her presentation, but the reason for that first and foremost is that I'm more of a nuts and bolts practitioner in this in this area than than such a policy advocate. I represent the Ohio Apartment Association and also the Columbus Apartment Association, the Dayton Apartment Association. But I also practice in the landlord-tenant world every day. And I represent one hundred and seventy-five thousand residential rental units around Ohio and probably thousands of units in Reynoldsburg. And so I have a lot of practical experience when it comes to different types of housing subsidy and different types of income sources. And I'm really well and familiar with the types of screening that landlords engaged in, the cost of doing business to landlords. And I defend about a hundred and fifty discrimination cases a year. I would note, interestingly, that about ninety-eight percent of all cases that go before the Ohio Civil Rights Commission are found not probable for discrimination. And most of their cases are on disability discrimination these days, but there's not a high rate of probable cause findings at the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. And different enforcement agencies like the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. With respect to source of income, on behalf of landlords, on behalf of the Apartment Association, I'm actually pretty happy to say that such a regulation, such as the one that you're you're talking about right now, is not actually objectionable to apartment owners, generally speaking, with some pretty significant nuts and bolts tweaks of the legislation. And so I'm not here today to say that source of income protection is negative or that it's a bad policy decision necessarily. I'm really actually here to advocate that you as city council people in Reynoldsburg need to balance the interests of landlords and tenants. And I say landlords and tenants because it's interests of both parties with the idea behind curbing systemic racism and making a statement about income protection for individuals who may have lower income and filtering that through into a disparate of impact discrimination framework. So when we talk about a way to combat systemic racism, much has been published. A lot of the studies that Ms. Booze cites are talking about how to make sure that we are getting rid of some of those age-old policies and trying to make sure that we're more diverse and make sure that systemic racism racism is not there. As we all know, race is a protected class. So discrimination on the basis of race is absolutely protected right now. What we're really talking about in a nuts and bolts analysis of source of income is whether or not the municipality should put a burden on the landlord to accept different types of subsidy. And so when you're talking about subsidy like social security income or like benefits income or like alimony income or child support, you're talking about a check that is going to a tenant and then being filtered into a landlord. So that's that's a payment form, just like a credit card is a payment form or money order is a payment form or a check. In that case, from my point of view, there is little harm to the landlord for agreeing or being required to agree to take that types of income. What, where we build a distinction from the landlord side is when the landlord is being forced to enter into a contract with a third party and take a bunch of steps to manage the receipt of funds. A lot of times we get stuck in the section eight program with with that type of contract. And I don't want to just focus on section eight because there are other types of funding that come with a contract that require a bunch of action. Generally speaking, there is not a one-stop shop, one-size-fits-all type of landlord. Your community has huge apartment complexes and has individuals like the individual that we heard from earlier that may have less than thousands of units that may feel a burden from having to engage in a contractual relationship with a third party and undertake a lot of different actions that maybe they wouldn't have had to had to undertake otherwise. I'd like to share my screen if I can. Is that something I can do?
Okay, no, just a moment.
Yep, no problem. I'll keep talking and share my screen in a second. But when we talk about the section eight program in particular. The Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, thank you. The Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority has an amount of money that they can allocate for the voucher program every year and they allocate that in terms of money, not in terms of vouchers. So depending on how much money they have, depends on how many how many vouchers they can allocate. And then they try to saturate those vouchers, meaning that they're used. And for my conversations with with CMHA, they're about ninety-nine percent saturated. So generally speaking, individuals who want to live somewhere that have a voucher have housing. What the conversation really has been in central Ohio between landlords and tenants over the last five years is an affordable housing gap. That is the main issue from my point of view and from the point of view of the Apartment Association. That is the most important thing to try to deal with in terms of a housing crisis in central Ohio. Because CMHA already has voucher saturation. So we know that individuals that have vouchers have a place to live. They can absolutely live in Reynoldsburg. They can live wherever they choose to live if someone's accepting a voucher. In addition to that, I think it is helpful to have legislation that indicates that any payment form should be accepted by a landlord as long as they're not, they're not attaching strings to that that a landlord may not be able to deal with. And I'll get to the strings in a second. Before I do, I just want to say about the voucher program in particular, that really, if we're going to increase affordable housing, we really need to increase vouchers. That's really the goal that that municipalities, that the city of Columbus, that Franklin County should should really focus on. And what we talked to, I know Abby Clayman's on this on this Zoom. Hi, Amy. You know, we talked about increasing vouchers, like a voucher supplement program to give landlords an incentive to take vouchers financially. That might make them better off than the rents that they could receive. So if a city wanted to put a fund together to make a voucher supplement. Maybe CMHA gives a resident a voucher and then the city kicks in a couple hundred bucks a month to make that voucher worth more. That would give an incentive to a landlord to actually increase vouchers. And that could be an executive program that is used with with whatever funding source is available to try to increase affordable housing in the locality. When we talk about a source of income, that legislation is absolutely going to protect the source of income, but it's not going to create more affordable housing. We are not going to take one voucher and make it three. We're not going to be able to build houses with a source of income protection, particularly if it's a private cause of action. What that could have the potential to do is to increase litigation costs for landlords. Because if they deny someone for their criminal background or for some other reason. And they ultimately get sued because of source of income. And they're dealing with lawsuits and and cost and that becomes a burden. With respect to the actual section eight program. I want to share something with you. This is a flow chart that was created by the National Apartment Association that gives you an idea of the difference between a lease or a lease-up with section eight vouchers and a lease-up with a normal process. And I'm more than happy to email this later to City Attorney Shuck or to all of you, but if I think if I email it to City Attorney Shuck, maybe he could share it with the rest of you. But ultimately, what you see just by looking at the flow chart without really getting into huge detail is that there are, there's a lot more process associated with the section eight program than than a regular lease-up. And you know, that process does result in delays. It results in inspections. It results in re-inspections. It results in a time gap between the time that you would be able to lease a unit and the time that you would ultimately have a paying tenant. There are protections that people may not, may or may not be aware of practically for how their relationship works with income recertifications and types of lease leases that are acceptable, lease lease provisions that are acceptable. It does require some degree of sophistication. I am not in any way saying that a landlord is incapable of doing this. What I'm actually really here to tell you is that there is a difference between a more sophisticated landlord that is in the business of managing and a smaller landlord that might be leasing one house or two houses or ten houses in what they have the capability to do. I'll use my dad as an example. He's an immigrant from Greece, does not read and write English very well. He would not really be a good candidate to interact in the section eight program necessarily. Because he doesn't have the ability to really interact with a HAP contract, a housing assistance payments contract, which is a contract a landlord signs with Metropolitan Housing Authority that allows them to engage in this interaction, to deal with inspections, to deal with some of the extra rigor that goes with the program. And I guess from the Apartment Association's point of view, it's not that we shouldn't have source of income as a protected class. It's that what we would recommend to Reynoldsburg is to add a clause in your ordinance that indicates that protecting source of income does not require a landlord to enter into a contract in order to receive funding. The landlord still has the choice whether or not to contract with an agency in order to receive funding. So if that language was inserted into your source of income legislation. You would be protecting alimony and child support and social security and you would be indicating a huge preference for the section eight program. Because you would be indicating that a landlord cannot just simply say, ah, no section eight for me. They can't do that anymore. Carly can't get on the phone on Fridays and call around and and find out we just don't rent to section eight. However, in the event that a landlord says, yes, I will take section eight. Which is fine. And the voucher program from CMHA or or Licking or Fairfield, whichever county happens to be in this particular locality, there's multiple counties, that's fine. They get the housing assistance payments contract and they realize, hey, you know, there's a whole bunch of other hoops I gotta jump through in order to be able to contract and do this the right way. I'm not able to do this. I'm not capable. This isn't something that I can handle. They would still be allowed to look at the recipient of the voucher and say, you know what? I'm not able to contract and meet these requirements right now, so I'm not going to accept this voucher. I believe, and on behalf of the Apartment Association, that that both is a mission statement from the city of Reynoldsburg that systemic racism is bad and that we want includes inclusion and that the form of payment itself, the money order, the aid receipt, whatever it is, should be accepted universally. It doesn't matter how you pay. As long as the money comes in, it really doesn't matter, in my opinion. However, if there's a whole bunch of rules that are also attached to that in the form of a contract that requires a different process and that process might be cumbersome for some. I'm not sure that the city should be imposing that will on everybody equally because some landlords are different than others and there's sophistication in their ability ability to do that. So from our point of view, we think that it's a great idea to have source of income. We just think that it could be modified. And by the way, we told Columbus the same thing. You know, that and they're considering it. We, I actually wrote into their legislation to talk about having a clause in there that does not require someone to engage in a third-party contract in order to receive the funds. And so hopefully this has been helpful. If you want the spreadsheet that indicates the differences between section eight And so hopefully this has been helpful. If you want the spreadsheet that indicates the differences between Section 8 process and regular leasing process, happy to do that, and more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dimitri. If you could, I would like, if you could go ahead email that, that flow chart to me and I'll forward that to members of council for their review as well.
No problem.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Carly.
I was just wondering if I can raise a few points in response.
Sure.
Thanks. So and I, I really appreciate that, that you talked about your dad and your dad's ability to be able to navigate those because that, I mean, that just hits home with me. My dad put me through college with, you know, two or three apartment buildings in Wasworth, Ohio, and he's 80 years old. And, you know, I approached all of these with him in mind, like, could my dad do this with his hearing going out, right? And I think the thing that I find reassurance is, is if you are a landlord, if you were able to be a landlord today, there's nothing in the Section 8 process or the Housing Choice Voucher Project that you can't navigate. It is, a flow chart looks wild anytime you put something into a flow chart, but it is not this burdensome, cumbersome process that, that isn't completely intuitive and isn't also bolstered by the fact that CMHA has landlord navigators and tenant navigators who are kind of these customer service liaisons that are there at every point in the process. But the broader point that I hear, and I think is, is one that's worth talking about kind of on the surface, is if there's going to be inconvenience, if there's going to be harm somewhere, how do you balance that harm between a tenant who cannot meet the needs of their family, who may ultimately become homeless, versus a landlord who has made a decision to enter into business in a highly regulated market? And which of those kind of competing needs takes precedent? The alliance's position is always going to be that the needs of the tenant and of the consumer to find safe, reliable, affordable housing is going to be where our primary concern needs to lie. And that is entirely consistent with a long jurisprudence in American law under fair housing theory, and that, that's exactly how this has worked before. So I think a great analogy that I always look forward to is talking about disability rights. So we, we talk about, well, what strings might be attached? Landlords shouldn't have strings on them. Landlords have always had strings under fair housing law. A lot of landlords, and I think rightly, we don't want service animals in our apartment building. Service animals tear up the hardwood floor. They chew at the linoleum. Service animals from a business perspective are terrible. But the law has said the right of a disabled individual to have a service animal trumps the right of the landlord to care for their property. And you are able to build in sufficient business protections to weigh against that risk. You can charge higher rent. You can create new policies. You can recover damages through the process at the end of the lease agreement. All of those same analogies of having some element of strings to protect the greater good is part of that kind of social contract that landlords agree to when they become landlords. I mean, I think that that's exactly the same mentality that I take with this. Yes, there could be some minor element of inconvenience. I personally think it's far outweighed by the fact that you get this payment guarantee that's basically good as gold. But if you do have to weigh those competing interests, the harm of being homeless, the harm of not being able to provide for your family is always going to be my primary concern.
Okay, Dimitri, any rebuttal of the rebuttal?
I don't want to keep you here forever. I, I would just say that at the end of the day, the landlords and tenants in Reynoldsburg absolutely have a right to get together and interact and take vouchers and other types of subsidy. And your legislation is important. However, if you're going to balance both parties, then you're going to set a precedent by saying source of income should be protected, but contractual responsibility should not be regulated. Right to contract has always been a constitutional right since the beginning of our country. The Fair Housing Act's only been around since the 60s. At the end of the day, whether or not a landlord has their particular capability to deal with any particular contractual responsibility is up to that landlord and their business practices. And I mean, I, I know Carly knows that the Legal Aid Society needs to help tenants consistently, and sometimes landlords navigate the Section 8 process in the eviction world every day. And as someone that's down there every day, I can tell you that is absolutely true. And so, you know, imposing that contractual obligation on a landlord without necessarily knowing what their capabilities of could really have some practical consequences for individuals in the community. And so I would just urge you to, to keep that in mind.
Okay, Attorney Shook, do you have anything else you want to add tonight?
Not on this item of legislation, but I do understand there are other speakers who are invited. So I will turn it over to you to give them the floor.
All right. Is that Amy? Are you with us to speak out as well?
Yes. So thank you very much. And this has been a very interesting conversation. And I thank both of the speakers for being here tonight. Many of the items that Rachel Clayton and I were going to cover have been covered. I have a few comments that I'd like to go over and Rachel May as well. So context, I am working with a group of people. We call ourselves create, building, welcoming communities, volunteers in Franklin County who have been working together to educate the public about the need for adopting source of income ordinances throughout the region. As Carly mentioned, over half the tenants who have housing vouchers currently live in areas where vouchers are protected by source of income laws. Landlords across the country are complying with these ordinances. They are accepting vouchers, and the, the sky hasn't fallen as you consider how to weigh the rights of people who are being discriminated against, against the rights of landlords not to sign additional paperwork. I hope you come out in favor of protecting people from discrimination. When people decide to have the business of being a landlord, no matter what size they are, they should be able to complete whatever paperwork, participate in the inspection process as needed, so that we do have more housing available. Now, it's true that source of income ordinances do not create more affordable housing. But what it does is it creates access to housing in areas where people don't currently have that access. And that's a very important distinction. I agree, we need more funding to have more rental support. We don't have enough. As background, there are currently 12,787 vouchers in Franklin County. Most of them are used in the city of Columbus. They are not evenly distributed throughout the region. So that means people don't have equal access. And that's important to allow people to have the right to live where they want to live in the region. 80% of the voucher holders are minorities, 78% non-Hispanic black, and about half of them are people with disabilities. So when you think about who's being impacted, think about the people involved and how important it is to give people the right to decide where they want to live. And is it more important to say, well, a landlord shouldn't have to use the, engage in the process of signing a few more pieces of paper because of their freedom of right to contract versus the right of people to live throughout the community? So one of the questions we've been asked as we've talked with people throughout the community, who opposes source of income ordinances? The people are NIMBYs, people who are saying, not in my backyard. We don't want those people here. When people use that kind of language, they are saying that people who have some type of housing voucher or alternate form of income to pay for their housing are less than others. That's oftentimes, the basis of those kinds of comments are based in racism. And we have to call it for what it is. Just because somebody's lower income doesn't mean that they're less than anybody else. We hear that people are concerned that people with vouchers will create more damages to units. That is just not true. People of all incomes may harm units. And by saying that we, that there'll be more damages is, is a myth. People who have a voucher are actually incentivized to be good tenants because if they're not, they're at risk of losing their voucher. And that's worth a lot. Now remember, source of income is not just about vouchers. We've been talking about that because, you know, you brought in the Housing Authority. It does apply to other sources of income. And it could be wages. It was mentioned earlier, child support, spousal support, grant or loan income, all forms of federal, state, or local housing assistance. And it could be housing assistance that's administered by nonprofits as well. So it's a broad term. So when the suggestion was allow source of income, but only if the landlord doesn't have to sign a special contract to get the money, that's a way to say, we don't want vouchers. And that's wrong. This is a big source of income for people. They have a right to it, and they should be able to decide where to live. So I was talking about why people may be opposed to this legislation. Mentioned NIMBYs, apartment owners or landlords who are forced to participate in a government program. Being a landlord is about running a business, and all businesses have paperwork. Those concerns should not be an excuse to allow discrimination. And remember, said earlier, when you have rental payments that are supported with vouchers, it's recession proof and COVID-19 proof. People who have lost their jobs because of COVID-19, they're, those landlords are protected. They are still getting their rent. Third, people who are concerned that landlords may increase their, their rents so as not to participate in the, in accepting vouchers. We've heard that stated by the Apartment Association that that would happen. The market determines when rents can be increased, and we would hope that landlords would not engage in that type of behavior as a means of getting around the legislation. This is a way to create mixed income communities. And that's important to families. It's important to communities and to economic development. So we hope that you move forward with a fair and balanced source of income ordinance that is similar to what has been adopted throughout the country and that it doesn't have exceptions for allowing landlords to not accept source of income if they have to sign a contract. It should not be limited to the number, to only landlords that have a high number of units. Right now, there are many landlords with only a couple of units that understand the process and comply with it. Sure, the first time a landlord does, it might be hard, just like the first time you pay your taxes. You have to figure out the paperwork, but landlords do, and they're very successful. So don't have any type of minimum number of units that this would then apply to. So thank you very much, and thank you for your interest in this ordinance. And we hope that it moves forward. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. And Rachel, I don't know if you have something to add?
You've been pretty thorough, Amy. My name's Rachel Clayton. I'm a professor at Ohio State in City and Regional Planning. Andrew actually is a graduate of our program, Andrew. And I'm also an associate dean in the College of Engineering. And I do study housing and inequality. And so I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to try to respond to, to, to arguments about law, frankly. But I am somebody who thinks about policy and space a lot and about the systematic, the systemic ways in which things we've been doing for a very long time that were not illegal up until the 1960s have created patterns of residents that we see duplicated today. And so even though something is, has a lot of precedent in law or a lot of precedent in history, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And so what we're doing by adding source of income to a fair housing legislation is saying, here is another way we are going to stand up and say, you can't use this as an excuse. I was just struck by the comment that contract law has been around for so long and fair housing has only been around since the 1960s. I think that's a specious argument for what, because of what it, as I just pointed out. So I think there's another myth in our country about markets. We believe in the free market. Markets work when people have perfect information and the perfect ability to make choices in that market according to the amount of money they have to spend. In the case of housing vouchers, that is not the case. Landlords don't know enough about the program for it to be frictionless. And those who have vouchers and money to spend can't use it anywhere. So this legislation fixes something that is a problem in the marketplace. I'm happy to take questions along with Amy, and thank you for having us tonight.
Madam Chair, I have a question. I have two questions. Is it okay to speak? The two questions that I have, that I've heard in the community is the time it takes in order to honor a voucher or what, a voucher or the second form of payment in terms of paperwork. And then my second question is those that may have vouchers and there is an issue, landlord has an issue with the tenants. Talk to me about eviction and with the family being on a voucher program, does that inhibit the landlord to proceed with any eviction notices?
I'm happy to respond to both of those, honestly. You know, when you talk about the voucher program, there's an immediate interaction with someone from the Metropolitan Housing Authority and the landlord to get them to agree to a HAP contract, a housing assistance payments contract. There's a review of a lease. There's an inspection. There may be items that fail the inspection. And so all those things have to happen before somebody can be housed with a voucher. You know, I was the attorney that negotiated changing white birch over to what it is today in Reynoldsburg. And when we did that deal, you know, we, we had a ton of, of, of effort that went into that. And there was a great deal of sophistication from that owner operator that was able to do that. And that would be a candidate for someone that has the sophistication to go through that program. There are, there are more landlords in, in around central Ohio that are small that might be using that for their retirement or that might have inherited than there are single entities that own big complexes, if you take the whole. And, and so really, that amount of time that it takes is not a big deal if you have 256 units like Eden of Reynoldsburg does, and you have a maintenance team, and you have a leasing staff, that is a business. But if you own three houses and you do it yourself, it, it's, there's a huge difference between those things. And you may not be capable of getting into the program. If you are capable of getting into the program and you find out that the relationship with your tenant isn't what you want it to be, there are more protections afforded to voucher holders than otherwise would be if they weren't a voucher holder. So there's a component of for cause evictions with vouchers. So there's a component of for cause evictions with vouchers. Not, not so much as a project-based subsidized apartment, but there are more protections. It's more difficult to terminate that, that relationship. So those types of things are things that are going to be taken into consideration when entering into a Housing Assistance Payments contract in order to have a voucher. And, and I'm not saying that that is in any way, shape or form a bad thing. Vouchers are wonderful. They're a wonderful way that the Metropolitan Housing Authority can provide low-income housing. I just am, am still not sure that it should necessarily be a legal requirement on every single landlord because they're all different. And so what you will find, in my opinion, based on the demographics in Reynoldsburg, is that you are diverse and that you're going to continue to be diverse. And that if you create a source of income law, you're going to have bigger landlords do that. Because they're not really going to have a, a good excuse to not go into that program. They're not going to want to deal with that. They're going to go ahead and accept Section 8 vouchers. Whether or not there's a contractual requirement in, component in that legislation. And then there may be individuals that say, hey, I'm not capable or I'm not, I'm not work, I'm not good at dealing with this. And, and they may choose not to for that reason. And they'll have to state that. Because you know, if somebody comes to them with a voucher and says, hey, I have a voucher and they just say, no, no voucher, that, that would still be discrimination under law with that change. So I hope that answered the question.
I think I would reiterate, sorry, Amy, I'll just.
No, I had Carly.
The problem of a kid in a bathtub shouting a room away, but this has been a long meeting and that's what's happening in the room next door. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate the statistic that on the timeline, the vast majority of these processes go from zero to 60 and are all the way through the CMHA enrollment process in less than 30 days. And even that's a large upward, upward limit. It's usually quite quick. And again, the things that slow that down are properties that do not meet the housing code, that are already non-compliant with the laws that they are already required to follow. And then also landlords who just don't see, see a rush. If you are waiting to find a tenant, if you're waiting to go through your own tenant inspection, you might not have a huge rush on. And that's, that's a business decision for them as well. So again, the, the timeline is really within the landlord's control more than anything else. And that paperwork, again, it's about four sheets of paper. And then the HAP contract, which I always kind of think of as essentially the lease agreement, but between the landlord and the CMHA. So if you could navigate a planal lease agreement, you can easily navigate the, the HAP contract.
I'd like to add to that, that according to CMHA, the average days to lease up, it's 86% are leased up within one to 30 days. Of these, a large portion lease up the day after the initial inspection, which is often less than 10 days after the first contract. So this concept that there's a lot, you know, a big delay isn't true. A question that has come up is can a landlord still sue for damages? If a tenant does create damages? And, and the answer is yes. So just because a person has a housing voucher doesn't protect them from a suit for damage to the unit. The question came up about the difference in eviction protections. A tenant with a housing voucher may only be terminated for good cause. What good cause means is examples, a material, serious violation of the lease, criminal activity by the tenant or someone in the home. So the, these are reasons that are legitimate. And one can think about the fact that private landlords do sometimes terminate leases or not renew them for reasons that are not okay. So this is all right to protect people from termination unless there's good cause. So just want to give you the other side of this. Thank you for the question.
Do you have any questions, comments from the committee? Councilman Savadi.
I'm not the committee, but thank you. I have a quick comment and then a question. First, I want to thank Attorney Shuck for bringing in the experts. I really need a lot of help on this issue because this was something I really had no prior experience with. I'd like to thank Keith and Carly and Dimitri and Amy and Rachel all for their expertise. I'm going to take it all back, probably re-watch this meeting. And, and really dig into this. And I believe there was one other letter that I didn't catch the name, but so I thank that person too. Part of my comment was, I want to thank Carly's efforts. Because I was led to believe by social media that at least 90% of the apartments in Reynoldsburg were Section 8. And I'm going to have to seriously reconsider believing everything I read on Facebook. But, so, thank you for that. But my question is in regards to something Keith said. And that's, so if I were a landlord, you know, and I know Keith is. And so I had a house or an apartment that was desirable. And I had a, you know, whatever, a few, it became open and I had a few days, week. Not sure how it's done, where it was sort of an open house kind of thing where I took applications. And I did get three or four applications. And say, all, all three or four of those applications, or maybe most of them qualified. And they were all good people. But one of them was a voucher. Would I be in any danger of simply choosing, you know, the one with a cashier's check or the one with whatever over the one with a voucher? If they are all qualified, would I be in any, in any danger of being sued under this statute, this legislation for, you know, for discriminating? I guess that's my question. So if any, anyone could address that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you would. I mean, I'm not sure that there would be liability that attaches, but people get sued for far less in the context of fair housing constantly. We teach fair housing seminars for the public housing authorities all over the state. And what we would tell you is the best practice would be to do a first come, first served when you're doing leasing. So that you're not put in a position to evaluate, well, which form of payment is better. I would tell you to do that regardless of whether source of income is protected. Because you don't want somebody to think that you're discriminating against them because of some other protected class. So, you know, we, I've had cases that I've defended in front of the Civil Rights Commission where they've had, you know, a person come in at 10 o'clock that didn't have all their information for their application. Then somebody came in at 11 and had it done. And their policy was, hey, you know, when you have a completed application, we rent to you if you're qualified. And the 11 o'clock person got rented to because it was completed. And the 10 o'clock person sued because they were there first, but it wasn't completed. So best practice in the landlord world and the tenant world is you kind of do it first come, first served. And you document that pretty well so that you're not left with that type of a situation because it's not a great situation to be in.
No, I just, I don't have a whole lot to add. I think that that's exactly the kind of situation that these ordinances are designed to, to provide light to the gray space of, right? Is all things considered, you're allowed to make a reasonable tenant choice based on anything that relates creditworthiness, their ability to maintain the apartment, anything that regards whether they're going to be a good tenant or a bad tenant. But what the law says is how they receive their income doesn't influence that. Whether you get child support or not, child support doesn't tell you whether you're going to have a good tenant from a landlord perspective. And I also think that, that, that situation of having three people who come in with identical records. Right? Like everybody is going to have a one-point credit difference. Everybody is going to have slightly different income. It, interesting, I think, for a theoretical conversation, but in the real world, you have the policies that Dimitri was talking about. They do all have triages and water flows to determine you have three people walk in your door, which is more creditworthy.
Fast out a couple of things, Councilmember Brian. So thank you, Dr. Rachel and also Amy for coming in and in testifying. And also to Carly and also Dimitri for actually speaking for and against it. So I truly appreciate this. I know the question was asked on the reasons why. Why, why did I decide to bring this forward in front of council? And one of the reasons why is because zip codes does matter. We know that it is, discrimination does happen. It happens right here in our own backyard. A lot of people do not want to talk about it. But again, in my private world, I, I get the calls about, you know, people, families needing to be protected based off of their income. And they want to make sure that they have a place to raise their family. So again, this ordinance is designed to protect anybody who wants to rent property in the city of respect. Especially during these economic crisis. We have a crisis that's going on. This ordinance will expand to all citizens' rights to equal housing opportunities for themselves and their families regarding, regardless of the source of income being used to pay for such accommodation. Such as the spousal support we talked about, the child support. And oh yes, the rent vouchers that people talk about, that voucher, that CMHA. Disabilities and our veterans. We have to be able to protect our veterans. It's been mentioned that 17 other states is, have something very similar to what we propose in here. And at least six Ohio cities have approved, has approved a legislation that's very similar to what we are asking, such as Bexley and also most recently, Westernville. We are a city of respect. We have to make sure that everyone has that opportunity to bring their families here, raise their families in that code 43068. You know, I appreciate everyone who has, you know, put some, some, some thought process through this, but this is important to me. And yes, I'm for it. It makes people uncomfortable when we have to talk about discrimination. It makes people uncomfortable that we have to talk about the source of income because it matters. It truly matters. And yes, it means that we may have to do a couple more things as landlords, property owners. But we want to, you have to look at the bigger picture of giving everyone the right to live and raise a family, no matter what the zip code is. And that's what we should be doing, especially because we are a city of respect.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. Do we have any other comments or questions from the committee or council?
I have one question. Maybe, I think, Amy, you brought the, what is the percentage of vouchers used by minorities? It's 80%, 98%? Can you refresh that number to me once?
Could you repeat that, please?
Percentage of voucher used by minorities?
Yes. Um, let's see.
CMHA, it's 80%.
Yep, it's 80.7% of CMHA voucher holders are minorities. 78% non-Hispanic Black. And 50% are used by a family with a disabled head of household.
Thank you.
The context, 12,787 voucher holders in Franklin County. Only 25% of people who would be eligible for a voucher based on their income actually have access to a voucher. It's very underfunded and it goes to what was stated earlier. We need more housing assistance for people who are lower income so that they have access to quality housing and are not rent burdened.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions, comments? All right, in that case, we're going to wrap this discussion session or work session up. The ordinance will be back, brought back to the committee at the next meeting, also as a work session. Moving on to item two, an ordinance to amend Chapter 795, Adult Entertainment and/or Sexually Oriented Businesses or Clubs of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Reynoldsburg. Attorney Shook.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Brian. I know I discussed this a little bit earlier and I'll just get a little bit more background as to what we're doing with Chapter 795. As we, as we heard discussed, the Bryce Livingston Corridor is an area that the city is focusing on crime reduction. And across the street on the Columbus side of Bryce Road, there have been a number of problems, secondary effects, we call them, that have been caused by adult-oriented businesses on that side of the street. In the last four years, two such businesses have been shut down, having been declared as nuisance properties by the Franklin County Environmental Court. And they were declared nuisance properties because of a number of factors. Most especially criminal activity, which includes drug trafficking, human trafficking, violence, and in one case, murder. So we have decided, when we were looking at some of our zoning changes in the later end of the year, that we wanted to ensure that our side of Bryce Road would not be an area where such businesses could be located. We, we identified that as an area of the city where they were most likely to be located if they came into the city and the area of the city where they would most create a problem for us as a community. Nonetheless, because that kind of speech is protected speech under the First Amendment and as interpreted by the United States Supreme Court, we do have to allow it in at least one of our zoning districts. So we identified last year that that would go into the Community Commercial District, which is on 256. That doesn't mean that we have any businesses coming in. We don't have any current businesses of that nature. We don't have any applications for any businesses of that nature. But that was a change that council made last year was to change that permitted use over to Community Commercial and take it out of that Bryce Livingston Corridor, which we felt was very important. In, in that process, one of the things that we looked at was if we had one of these businesses come into the city, where could they be located? Specifically, where could they be located compared to some of our sensitive uses, like our schools, like our parks, churches and residential districts? So we looked at Chapter 795. And Chapter 795 allowed was that one of these businesses could be located within 350 feet of those sensitive uses. When I researched other communities in the central Ohio area, every single one of them had the space limitation at 500 feet. And so we, we felt pretty confident that we could go ahead and increase that distance to 500 feet and modify the manner in which we measure that distance so that we are maximizing the protection for schools, for our parks, for churches, for our residential districts. So the change that's presented to you tonight, and I would ask you to push this forward for a first read, is to expand the distance, the distance between one of these businesses and those sensitive uses. And that's all that these changes do. With that, I'll answer any questions.
So Attorney, so I asked this question to you before and I'm asked that same, but now it's more clear than I was understanding before. After I read this thing, I also read a lot of things in social media and also got a few calls from a resident also. So just for clarification of the people who asked me the question, now I understood, but I think there are people watching and they might have the same question again. We are not bringing these businesses. In fact, we are pushing them out of the, as much as we can. Is that right?
I'd be careful in, in how I phrase it. We are required to provide reasonable alternative avenues of this kind of communication. So this is First Amendment protected speech. We couldn't zone it out of the city if we want to. But we can put in restrictions that protect against those secondary effects that we talked about. That is what the United States Supreme Court allows us to do. And I wouldn't put anything before the council that hasn't already been approved by either the US Supreme And I wouldn't put anything before the council that hasn't already been approved by either the US Supreme Court or one of the lower courts that has reviewed a similar ordinance. This is what we are allowed to do. This is about the extent of how we are allowed to do it.
But we are not, it's not, we are bringing these businesses.
No, we are not, we, we are not trying to bring one of these businesses to this area.
Okay, this one makes you I love that.
Director Boucher, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryant. You know, this comes for you and Attorney Shook and I really took a long, hard look at this when we were redoing the zoning code and found the Skid Row clause that basically we're going to be increasing. And it should be noted that we've looked long and hard at what district needed to go to. And as Attorney Shook mentioned, the Innovation District, which is the Bryson Maine area, we did not feel like we needed to place it there. In fact, we, we chose the CC District because of how, what the buildout currently is, the deed restrictions that are already placed within that zone from the ownership that's already there and felt that it was a much safer place to put that. With the added restrictions, we absolutely feel like we're strengthening our cause without affecting, as Mr. Shook had mentioned, the First Amendment rights. So, you know, two fifty-six and really the Lowe's Center are the two only areas with those being dominated by just a handful of owners that we feel have their best interest and as well as the Reynoldsburg's best interest. This is the best location that we could ever have to allow this because we have to allow it someplace. So the development government is absolutely in favor of this and is a great measure for us to protect ourselves in the future of Reynoldsburg.
Thank you, Director Boucher. Do we have any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from council? Okay. I move that we forward this ordinance on to council for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson Row. We have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there's no further business before the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a report from Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for January the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Row, Councilmember Pacquiao, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance creating chapter one three nine seven rental property registration to the Reynoldsburg Code of Ordinance to provide for the registration of residential rental housing located within the boundaries of the city of Reynoldsburg. This ordinance is being discussed as a work session only. Attorney Shook, would you like to make a few comments regarding this legislation?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Strickland. This is the proposed chapter thirteen ninety-seven rental property registration that was previously presented to council last spring as a work session. We held it back because at the time we were passing a vacant property registration ordinance and, and I think we as a city want to be able to have an opportunity to look at how we were going to effectively administer that registration before we moved on to something that would probably be much more significant volume. This is re-presented to council for your consideration. The only significant change from when this was presented to council last spring to today is that there's a substantial reduction in what those fees would be, those annual fees for registration. But other than that, it's almost identical. And I would note that since the time that we had that work session, the city of Gehanna this past fall amended their rental property registration ordinance and it looks very similar to what we previously proposed to council.
Are there any questions for Attorney Shook? Yes, Councilmembers Savati.
I just wanted to ask Attorney Shook and potentially Director Boucher to address the question that was asked by a citizen as to thoughts on the Development Department's ability to take on this.
Yeah, so that's, that's a, that's part of, so the preamble to the ordinance indicates that this is going to be assigned to the Development Department, but the ordinance itself does not do that. The ordinance assigns the appointing authority as the Director of Public Service. So we go to the Service Department and from there likely to the Building Department. I would just mention the preamble.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? From council? All right, this ordinance will be brought back to the committee of public transport, I'm sorry, yes, of public service and transportation for further discussion. All right. Moving on to item number two, an ordinance authorizing the annual participation in the ODOT road salt purchasing contract. Director Dorman, are you still there? Director Dorman? If you're speaking, you're on mute. Is there any?
He's having some technical difficulties. If you want to give a moment more, he's trying to log in through the phone system and it's being twitchy. Or he fell asleep completely, which is, either one is a distinct possibility at this point. I can't speak, he's up, there we go.
Okay. Hey, there you go. Yes, we can hear you. No problem.
I've been here the whole time, I promise.
I, I believe you. So yeah, we are item number two.
Yeah, this is the annual contract that ODOT puts out. Years ago, salt prices started to get kind of erratic from year to year. So ODOT, giving their purchasing power throughout the state, depending on the district, allowed other municipalities to participate in their salt contract every year. You know, several, several municipalities do this. Reynoldsburg, from what I know, has done this for the past, at least going back to twenty fifteen. I have some data on, I, I assume it's probably longer than that. It basically, what we go in, we basically tell ODOT how much salt we anticipate using for the year. They add it to their overall contract and bid it out. And then we just pay the vendor directly for the salt and they deliver it to the city.
Thank you, Director Dorman. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any from council? Is someone trying to speak? Yes, Councilmember Baker.
Is this going towards the salt for next winter?
Correct. So we have to purchase, yeah, we have to purchase at least ninety percent of the contract. We have to fill a certain amount. And yeah, so basically what we will do is use what we have currently, deplete whatever we can and then restock. We have to order it, I think, have to have it ordered and delivered typically by end of, end of summer, beginning of fall.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Director Dorman? So I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacquiao. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forward to council for a first reading. Item number three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a Ford truck and related equipment for the street department appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman?
Yes, so on this ordinance, you know, we apologize for the, for the emergency on this. And we've discussed this a little bit, how to maybe avoid these issues moving forward. I think what we talked about is if we have any kind of large vehicle purchase that, that we may pass them or introduce them at least simultaneously with the budget. The issue is with these particular vehicles, they are only manufactured certain times of the year. So if we do not purchase it now, we would have to wait then until the production line starts again in the fall and then we would not be able to have this vehicle in the fleet and being utilized this year. It was budgeted as part of our twenty twenty-one budget, so the money's already allocated. We're not asking for any new, new monies for this. But however, in order to get it in production, we are asking for the emergency legislation. And this is purchased through, once again, a state purchasing program. The state goes out every year and secures pricing from various manufacturers and vendors to guarantee the lowest and best price.
Thank you. Are there any questions or, or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any questions from council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacquiao. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forward to council for a first reading. Item number four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a F three fifty Ford truck and related equipment for the water and sewer department appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Director Dorman, is this kind of the same situation here?
It does, it's a different department within public service. All right, I should say, correct. One's for the street department, one's for the water department.
And, and also when we talk about changing like the process and just putting these requests in a little bit earlier, I think we, we'll be ready for it the next time to go around when we asking for trucks and, and everything. Is that correct?
Correct. What we would do is probably introduce it sometime, you know, early December. That way the ordinances are all ready to go. Come January, we'd probably have the third reading and by then the budget's passed and the money's already there and we're ready to go then. So yeah, that's our, that's our goal moving forward.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everyone is kind of aware of that process as we move forward. We're working with the department. Are there, are there any other questions from the committee? From council? I move before this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson Row. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Oppose? The motion carries. This ordinance will be forward to council for a first reading. As there is, there is no further business for the Public Service and Transportation Committee, I return the meeting back to you, Madam President Jenkins.
Thank you. Our next report is from the Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Savati.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. Not to be outdone, our first item will also be on for a work session and will be related directly in it. So without further ado, item one is an ordinance to establish chapter seven oh one landlord-tenant relationships of the codified ordinances of, of the city of Reynoldsburg. Again, this ordinance is being discussed as a work session only. And once again, I think we're going to hear from Attorney Shook.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking way too, I'm speaking way too much tonight. We're bringing you the trifecta rental legislation. And I apologize to Chairman Salvati. This, this item actually got fat fingered into the Finance and Administration Committee and probably should have been in the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee. But it's here now, so let's discuss it. This is, this is a proposed legislation for the creation of chapter seven oh one, the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. The title of that chapter would be landlord-tenant relationships, which would allow us, I suppose, in the future to consider future legislation. But specifically, what's before you tonight is what is commonly referred to as renters' choice legislation. The purpose of this legislation and the language of this legislation would impose a requirement upon landlords in the city of Reynoldsburg to offer prospective tenants various options regarding security deposit. And of those options, it would be either an option to purchase security deposit insurance, to pay monthly premiums for their security deposit, or to pay, shoot, or to pay an amount of no more than fifty percent of what the monthly rental rate, monthly rental rate would be. Sorry, it's getting late. So this is an item that was requested by Councilmember Baker. It's on for work session. We are again very fortunate to have Attorney Hatzapetinos here and Attorney Booze here. And if they are willing, I would ask both of them to present either argument for or against this proposed legislation. And this time I would start with Dimitri, since I probably got started last time.
That sounds good. Well, first of all, again, thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is actually probably of the three ordinances that you had that affected landlords and tenants tonight, the least contentious. In fact, we do not oppose this ordinance necessarily. My only comment to this would be that it is important, in my opinion, and, and on behalf of the Apartment Association, to add language into this ordinance and the drafting that makes it clear that the insurance that would be potentially available to a tenant is procured by a tenant. So the landlord is not offering insurance. A landlord is offering the tenant the option to buy insurance, but they would still have to come up with a policy of insurance and provide it to landlord. And I, I think that that gets lost in the shuffle when these ordinances are cut and pasted from different cities that have already enacted them. And, and I would also tell you that although we didn't specifically speak about rental registration and inspection, I think of the ordinances that you had before you tonight with respect to landlords and tenants, the rental registration and inspection ordinance would be the most burdensome to landlords. And so as between the three, I think the Apartment Association would take the stance that the other two are not something that are abjectly opposed by the Apartment Association. But the rental registration and inspection ordinance is something that already exists in the laws to protect tenants. Registration is required in Franklin County with the auditor. And with respect to the laws that are already on the books, whether it's the Landlord Tenant Act or the International Property Maintenance Code, your building department and code enforcement group has the ability to enforce the existing laws and effectuate code compliant apartments and rental houses. And so I would just leave you with, you know, I think the, the renters' choice legislatures, legislation is a good policy and, and we don't oppose it. And we would hope that of the three, that perhaps the rental registration and inspection ordinance is the one that we could consider revising or perhaps not having at all because I think it is quite burdensome to landlords. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to speak for the Alliance. We haven't, I'll say, taken an official position on either of these two ordinances. So we're happy to kind of discuss what, what the world looks like as it relates to it, but we're not officially endorsing either until I think you guys have a broader opportunity to discuss what your priorities are going to be. As far as the rent registry ordinance is concerned, I think that is kind of in your ballpark in that if you are going to have with any of these ordinances threshold where it does not apply unless you own a certain number of units, then the rent registry almost becomes mandatory because otherwise there's no enforcement mechanism to know who owns that certain number of units. So it's kind of a necessary cost and it also can have additional benefits. It can help you have a better understanding of what your housing stock is and have a better line of communication with landlords if there's some sort of problem. But those are, there's a kind of optional unless you add and opt out under the other provisions when it becomes mandatory. As it relates to renters' choice, I think the Alliance's position is that we love that this debate is- As it relates to renters' choice, I think the Alliance's position is that we love that this debate is happening, right? We know that having large security deposits is a real barrier, especially to low income tenants and to younger tenants who don't have as much work history, as much of a credit report built up yet. But within this, it's also kind of important to note too that this is a very new kind of body of law, right? This this isn't something that has been adopted all over the country. It's not as well established as Source of Income where I can cite cases and I can cite research studies. This whole theory is, you know, about a year or two old. And given that, still a fantastic idea. But it makes sense to add in certain consumer protections just to make sure that all of the relationships work the way that we want them to work, right? And I think when it comes to who the American people trust most, landlords and insurance companies probably aren't at the top of the list. And this is getting everybody into bed together. So it helps to just kind of put out general statements of rights. So for instance, should a landlord be able to get a referral fee if they are funneling tenants into one specific product? And I think the answer there is probably not, right? Because there's a perverse incentive to put consumers into a product that they don't understand without providing them the right amount of information to make that as an informed decision. Also, should should something go wrong with the relationship? For instance, is the insurance company does something wrong? Is that lawsuit then going to be venue'd in Reynoldsburg? Or is it going to be venue'd in Massachusetts or Florida or Texas? I mean, the kind of standard issues that we look at with a consumer tenant or I'm sorry, a consumer relationship would be relevant here as well. And as far as the landlords are concerned and the members that we represent who own properties, we want to be really cognizant of how these elections can be made by the tenant. So there is going to be a proliferation of insurance companies, surety companies, credit providers who move in to fill this space. Does that landlord have to do business with every one of those ten thousand companies? And how do they manage their costs when they are doing that? And how do they effectively track? All of these are for short questions that can be answered. I think right now we just are excited to to start answering. I'm going to take them off and make sure that we really find that balance between true tenant choice, consumer protection, and landlord operation needs.
All right, so back to me. So thank you, Dimitri and Carly. Is there any questions from the committee or really counsel on this ordinance? Councilmember Baker?
I'll go ahead and speak since the one that asked Attorney Shuck to help me put this together. The ideal of this legislation is to help eliminate a bit. One of the vast barriers that prohibit people from being able to rent an apartment. And I'm speaking from personal experience, being a renter when I was in college and also my mom renting apartments and stuff. And one of the things was we would find an apartment or a house somebody's rented out that was really nice and everything. And we could afford the monthly the monthly rent. However, with most places, they want you to pay first month, last month, and a security deposit or a first month and a security deposit. And you cannot and some people just cannot afford both. And especially being in situations before where you either had to choose between paying a utility bill or buying food and putting on the table. So this piece of legislation is to help break down one of the more common barriers that people face when they're trying to rent property. I know some folks would say, well, why don't they just go somewhere where they can afford? That's not all, excuse me, that's not always a good choice to go by because nobody wants to live in a crap hole. And so this this is more of a win win situation for the for the tenant who's trying to rent and also the landlord to make sure the landlord is getting a security deposit and covering any damages that might happen on their end. And it also is opening up the door for a tenant to be able to get into an apartment that they would really like. And I do agree with the gentleman when he said that the tenant should purchase the the insurance, which that that's one of the parts of this piece of legislation that was geared towards where the tenant will buy, the insurance will show to the landlord, hey, I have renters' insurance right here. And so this unit will be covered for damages and stuff because I've had to buy renters' insurance when I've rented. It's just like buying homeowner's insurance when you buy a house. It's just that this is just to help break down a barrier. And I believe that it will help everyone in this instance.
If I may, one of the things I would highlight is the phrase deposit insurance in this context can be somewhat misleading because what a lot of the companies provide is not an insurance policy. It's more of a surety bond. So just for hypothetical sake, if you have a tenant, they get this policy, they pay, we don't know how much. It depends on a lot of factors, but maybe they pay five dollars a month, maybe they pay fifty dollars a month, maybe they pay five million dollars a month. But they do that through the life of the tenancy. Their contract ends, they vacate, the landlord comes in and they find out that there's been some amount of damage. Well, you would imagine with an insurance policy, what happens is the landlord makes a claim to the insurance company. The insurance company pays it, everybody moves on their way. That's not what happens. The landlord makes a claim, the surety company pays it, the surety company then goes and collects against the tenant. And they instituted debt collection action, they could charge it to a credit account. There's a lot of different ways that they go about that. But it's just important to know that unlike insurance, that tenant doesn't receive any level of protection. What this does most traditionally is it just provides protection to the landlord at a cost to the tenant. Again, I think that there there can be value in that. There's people who would argue that that's fine because it's reducing a move in barrier. But it's important talking about it to realize that there are those nuances to it, which I'm sure you're beyond aware of.
Yeah, and it's and it's also about educate is educating the tenant and the landlord. You know, the tenant, a good practice is before you move in, you know, every phone has a camera now. You take pictures, you note what's what is and what is not working into in the apartment. And then when you leave, you go through that same checklist, you take the picture. So that way a landlord can't come in, punch a hole in the wall, say, oh, you did it. So I mean, it's it's just about it's educational, burial as education as well. And I'm done.
I thought you were still talking, so I was reading. So are there any more comments from from committee members or counsel on this? If not, I would probably from the comments, the great comments that have been made by Dimitri and Carly, I would probably say I would ask the attorney's office to maybe see if there's any any additions in that in those comments that can be made to this policy to make it stronger. And so this ordinance we brought back to committee probably has discussion again, maybe not this committee. I don't know. But a committee. So I'll go ahead.
I just want to make one note, and I forgot to mention this, that in this piece of legislation that it gives if the tenant does not want to go through the insurance route, let's say they do want to go ahead and do the security deposit. Instead of putting all the money up front, they have the term of the lease, the whole lease, to pay it before they are moved, before the lease is over. So like I said, it's still a win win where the landlord is still going to get their money, whether it's going to be part of the monthly rent or something separate per month, that they're still going to get their money and the tenant, it won't be a barrier for a tenant to be able to move in the rental unit. So I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, I mean, personally remembering my rental days, that that would have probably been the route that I would go. You know, if I could afford a little, a tiny bit more on the rent rather than having to come up with all that money right up front. So yeah, I think that's probably the best option in this particular particular ordinance. So I guess I'll go ahead and close this on that and we'll bring this ordinance back to somewhere for further discussion next meeting. So second item on the agenda is an ordinance to approve payment of services performed in prior year and declaring an emergent emergency. Sorry. And I'm told Clerk Preacher may have something to say on this.
I'm going to defer Chair Savadi to Auditor Sissick.
Okay. Clerk Preacher defers to Auditor Sissick.
Chairman Savadi, members of council, President Jenkins, good evening. This legislation comes to you from your clerk. As an emergency, it's for services that were rendered prior to the auditor certification. It needs to be passed as an emergency because we have a thirty day limit. It's a then and now. I have the ability to approve then and now is up to three thousand dollars and this is over it. The money is available in this year's budget. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, and with that, are there any questions from the committee? From the rest of council? All right, and I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so I saw Councilwoman Strickland give the second, so. Any last discussion on this? No, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. And there's no further business for Finance and Administration Committee. So I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Item ten on the agenda is consent agenda for first reading. Items ten A through G are part of a agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with a first reading. With the clerk, please read items ten A through G. Item A, an ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain real property located on U.S. Route forty identified as parcel numbers zero one zero zero one seven four six six dash zero zero point zero 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 one zero dash zero one eight zero three zero dash zero zero point zero 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 and zero one zero dash zero one eight zero three zero dash zero zero point zero zero one in Licking County and adopting permanent zoning. B, an ordinance to approve the application made by Maplewood Farms LTD to have certain land located within the city of Reynoldsburg located on Summit Road, permanent parcel number one two five dash zero two six six one six dash zero zero dot zero 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 designated for placement in the agricultural district. C, an ordinance to amend chapter seven ninety five adult entertainment and or sexually oriented businesses or clubs of the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. D, an ordinance authorizing the annual participation in the ODOT road salt purchasing contract. E, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase a Ford truck and related equipment for the street department appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. F, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase an F three fifty Ford truck and related equipment for the water and sewer department appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. G, an ordinance to approve payment of services performed for prior year and declaring an emergency. These ordinances stand for a first reading. Item eleven on the agenda is consent agenda for a second reading. Items eleven A and B are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with a second reading. With the clerk, please read items A, eleven A and B. A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two irrigation service contract and appropriating funds therefore. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two landscape service contract and appropriating funds therefore. These ordinances stand for a second reading. Item twelve on the agenda, consent agenda for a third reading. Items eleven A is part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Counsel will move forward with a third reading. With the clerk, please read item eleven A. An ordinance to approve the final plat plan for the Spring Hill Farm Development. May I have a motion to approve this ordinance? Councilmember Savadi? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. With the clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero. Thank you. Item thirteen on the agenda is other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss this evening?
Yes, Council, President Jenkins, this very late, but I have a few things to say. I was thinking to tell in the beginning, but something happened. Now it's a little late, but anyway, I'm going to tell that. Two things particularly. Number one is I am in the governor's minority vaccine advisory group representing the minority communities and bringing our voice and the governor's discussion of the how to help roll out the vaccine program with COVID nineteen into the communities and in fact, educating the communities about that one. So in that process, there are many things been discussed, how to reach out to minority communities from a different ethnic background, religious background or racial backgrounds that a lot of misinformation's been going out there. So with that, now we have been starting getting the vaccine for last maybe a month or so. For there are many members of the community who already received the vaccine. There are many who are still waiting and there are many who don't want. There are many who still want and still waiting for that. And just wanted to let you know that starting the January eighteenth, people with the age of eighteen, so age of eighty and above started getting and with decreasing the five years age, we'll be getting from people sixty five, sixty five and above will start getting the vaccine from February first. So wants to bring this out to the public that it is not a mandatory, but advisable that to get hear from the experts, but there are a lot of people who don't agree, but that's okay. For me, I'm I work in healthcare and I have to do meet a lot of people every every now and then. So I got opportunity to get the vaccine, so I I received my vaccine. And also my dad was ninety eight, he also received the vaccine last week. So just want to bring this message out in the community. And also if people are interested with the appropriate age group of seventy five and above, Primary One Health and full disclosure, I worked there though, is the only Franklin FQ federally qualified health center in central Ohio, which is doing a mass vaccination in its one location. We have eight different locations in central Ohio, but Agler Road, Agler Road location, there is a vaccine program is going on on that is tomorrow, twenty sixth and twenty eighth. And that's two days only for right now, but I think with the more vaccines available, that will be more people can go and get the vaccines and all those eight, ten locations will be open. But for right now, there's a number to make an appointment and Uh, and uh, with the appointment only, there is uh, two days available for the vaccine to re- to get the vaccine for appropriate age, that appropriate age means people age seventy-five and above can ma- make appointment and get the vaccine at uh, Agler Road, Rookson and Primary One Health, that's tomorrow and twenty-eighth. So this is one thing which I wanted to bring, and I also have one more thing, then I'll be done, it's very late. Uh, lately, uh, I spoke this thing with the uh, city attorney last week or so. Lately, I, I am receiving quite a number of calls from the residents about domestic violence. Uh, I think as a city, we need to do something else, something else in a sense. I mean, people, they call and domestic violence are complicated cases. And I'm talking with the city attorney, I found that number of cases are increased than in the past. I think uh, we might have to come up with some solution to this, may not be a right away things which we can do, but I think that this is the need which is growing. And I also uh, found that with the COVID nineteen, the people are sitting inside and maybe not much of an exposure outside, these things have been going uh, increasing. So that's just, I wanted to uh, bring these two things out here. That's all.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? Yes, Councilmember Baker?
Uh, I'm just going to piggyback off of Councilman uh, Pacoel, because I received a call today from an older resident, and she was asking how come Reynoldsburg does not have a site where people who want to take the vaccine to go get it in that she's, she was informing me that she couldn't go all the way up north, or I know the Schottensteins is another, or Value City Arena is one of the bigger sites that are doing it, that she can't get over there. And I told I will bring it to the tension uh, to the mayor and the council, because maybe there's some information that can be passed along to her that I didn't know the answer, but I told I will seek out the answer for her. Um, I know tomorrow on uh, the mayor's show, he's going to have somebody from, is it the Franklin County uh, Board of Health?
Yeah, Joe, uh, Joe Mazzola from Franklin County Board of Health is going to be there. We've actually been advocating for quite some time uh, to bring a vaccination site into Reynoldsburg. Uh, I think Franklin County Department of Health would love to have one here, but there are other issues that are preventing that at this point in time, but we are working with them. And the show's on Wednesday at twelve o'clock, unless time has really gone that long on this meeting, I don't know, maybe it's Tuesday night.
Um, I'm just going to, just a brief of my tradition, thank everyone who were, who's helped fighting COVID, keep up the good work. And um, it's, it'll be over soon, hopefully.
Does anyone else on council have any other matters to discuss?
President Jenkins, just a reminder to the council members only, please stay on for just a second. Uh, so we can, so uh, Jennifer can grab the pic she needs, so it won't take but a second, so um, staff, you can drop out of the meeting and um, when, when the meeting's adjourned.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I understand that we're not meeting in chambers, but you could at least turn the heat on for Molly. She looked like she's sitting outside.
Keeping an eye on the budget.
Our upcoming meetings, there's a schedule of upcoming um, council and BZBA and Planning Commission meetings. Council anticipates continuing with virtual meetings. Our next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, February the eighth. And it will begin at six thirty P.M. Unless there is no other further business, this meeting is adjourned and the time is ten oh six P.M. Thank you, everyone.
What are we doing? Are we supposed to be smiling or what? I mean, can somebody please say what, you know?
Let us know when she's taking the picture, so we know.
We're still live on Facebook.
Guess if she's taking a picture, I better take my headphones off.